Hello. Hello, hello. Hello.
So maybe it's just... Oh, okay.
Testing this speaker, testing my microphone. Can you hear me? Okay, all right.
I hereby call the Des Moines City Council Regular Meeting for Thursday, June 23rd to order. May I have Councilmember Harris, please read the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the record reflect that six members are present and Councilmember Oxegar will be attending by, attending telephonically. So if the first thing I want to do is verify that we can hear him and he can hear us.
Yes, I can.
Okay, yes, and it is about a 10-second delay, Gene, so we'll work with that, okay?
Yeah, I've turned, yes, I've turned down the videos.
Okay, fantastic. I'll pretty much be leaving my mic on and just so you know, I will, when we take votes and so forth, I will take the vote here, then independently ask you for your vote. I will go through questioning and, you know, refer to you when your time is open or after people have asked questions, so you'll have the opportunity as well, okay?
Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, are there any correspondence?
No correspondence, Mayor. Public comment from Ryan Jensen about sex offenders in his neighborhood, and you have the sheet for those who have signed up. Thank you.
All right, thank you. It is now time for public comment. I would just like to remind those participants that any person making personal impertinent or slanderous remarks or become boisterous, threatening, or personally abusive while addressing the council will be removed from the meeting. You have three minutes to speak and the only person signed up is Gary Peterson, Jr. Sir, you have the floor for the next three minutes.
Gary, I want to talk about the Fifth Street. I want to ask you guys and see if we can get it done. We've been having problems down there and I want to address the people going down the corners or going too fast. I'm afraid they're gonna go down that park and into the other side. And another issue is I'd like to have that road closed soon as possible, if you can. And the other night, we had fireworks down there above our house and it scared the daylights out of us around midnight. And the, and I'd like to have the cul-de-sac done. And about my fence, I don't know what you guys want to do. Push it in or leave it out like it is. I know it's steady right away. And I just want to know is that light post in the corner, the light is so dim, it's not bright anymore. Can we, or can you guys put a different LED bright light in the corner? And I just want to, but fire, or I forgot the name. The, you guys know what I'm talking about. The, yeah, that's all I have to say. I'm sorry.
That's fine, thank you, thank you, Gary. I'm gonna let the city manager respond.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you for your comments. All of those are valuable. Most of what you described are things we intend to do moving forward. So we appreciate your awareness and conscientiousness as a neighbor in that neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. With that, we will move on to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I have a couple of items today. I'm gonna start with a pleasure to have Mr. Rich Shockley here from the Small Business Development Center at Highline where we participate with Rich both operationally and financially through the Soundside Alliance. So if floor is yours, if you'd like to give us an update on your quarterly report.
Thank you for inviting me to speak here tonight. My name is Rich Shockley. I'm the Center Director for Economic Development Programs at Highline College. We have two different programs there, our Start Zone Program and our Small Business Development Center. It's been a few years since I've spoken and so what I thought I'd like to do today is tell you a little bit about the SBDC, Small Business Development Center, then bring it down to some of the work our center is doing itself and then if we have time, share with you how we might work with a client. So the Washington Small Business Development Center, we have just under 40 advisors across the state. We have about 27 offices right now and a couple new ones that are being opened up. Most of the advisors in these centers are direct employees of WSU, but you can see in the bottom right-hand corner, we have a couple centers who are sub recipients and Highline is one of those. The Small Business Development Center was established in 1980 through an act of Congress. The, we're a partner with the Small Business Administration and we're funded partly through a cooperative agreement with the Small Business Administration. And I'd like to describe that for you because it's a key piece of what we do and it really is a way for the city to benefit from this relationship. A cooperative agreement is where we would go to the community and we get local support financially and through just referrals and interest in our program. And the goal is to help our small businesses get started, stay going, help them with opportunities and challenges. But we can take that financial support, go back to the SBA through this cooperative agreement and get a dollar-for-dollar match. So essentially, we're able to double the local investment through this relationship and bring all those dollars back to the local community. The things that we do is we provide no-cost confidential advising and we do some training as well. Our goal is to help businesses make better decisions. We're different than a consultant. We don't come in and say, here's your problem, here's the solution, let me implement the plan for you. We come alongside the business and we say, what do you want to accomplish? What are some challenges or opportunities that you're facing? Then we help them create a plan and help them develop and implement that plan, supporting them along the way. Through our network, because of that cooperative agreement that I mentioned, it gives us access to any advisor in the state network. For example, I work with a business owner here in the city of Des Moines who's doing some technology work and I've helped him and introduced him to our advisor in Pullman, who's helped him write a technology grant. That's an example of how we can leverage the relationship that we have across the state. But we'll really work with the business on any aspect that they're looking for. We'll try to help them solve their issue or take advantage of the opportunity. If we can't do it, we'll bring in an advisor. If we can't solve it there, we'll refer them out to someone who can help them. We do provide the no-cost training that I mentioned. And last year in 2021, across our state, we offered just over 300 training sessions and just over 10,000 business owners attended. And a typical business advisor, we have, we've owned or own a business. We have management experience. Many have an MBA or the equivalent of that, prior experience in consulting or coaching and then proven financial analysis and communication skills. And what differentiates us from other SBA partners, there's a lot of great partners out there. Scores are a great partner. We work with them closely. There's Women's Business Center, there's the Veterans Business Center. But what differentiates us is we're full-time advisors. We go through a certification when we join the network. It's a six-month certification. We're assigned a mentor within our network and we go through 12 different modules. And then each year, we do continuing education of a minimum of 32 hours. We have specific goals that are laid down for each of us. It comes from the SBA to our state, then to our region, to our center, and then to the individual advisors. So we each are measured on a number of different outcomes. And then we go through an accreditation, which is a key piece to this because our accreditation gives us access to that SBA relationship. In fact, next month, our state is gonna go through our accreditation. We do this every five years and it's not measuring our results, it's measuring the processes and looking for continuous process improvement. We also are, we bring in outside auditors to audit our financials and then they audit our programmatic work as well. And then annually, we have an outside, third-party, an independent third-party do a survey of our clients that we've worked with locally or recently and past five years. And that's how we bring in some of the results that I'll show you in just a moment here. These are the state results from 2021. There's a lot of numbers there, so I'm not gonna go through all of them, but I'll highlight a few of them. As a state, we worked with 34, just over 3,400 businesses. We helped them create just over 2,800 jobs, 161 new business starts. We helped them increase their revenue by just over 120 million and then raised capital of over 107 million. So these statistics you see here are some of the metrics that we're managed and measured against as well as hours serving clients. And this is a 10-year, results of our last 10 years. Now, we don't count any of these results unless they're client-verified. You know, oftentimes, people throw out these numbers and you say, how'd you get that? Is it real? So ours, we have a written statement from the client that says, with the help of the SBDC, I was able to accomplish these objectives. So I'd like to just spend a few minutes on our center here at Highline, show you the last year's results and then look at where we're at this year. This is what our overall program at Highline did last year. Excuse me, along the left-hand side, you see that we have three primary funders, Soundside Alliance. Michael mentioned that you're part of Soundside Alliance. That's made up of five cities, Des Moines, Normandy Park, Burien, SeaTac, Taquilla, the Port of Seattle, Highline College, and Seattle South Side Chamber. That makes up Soundside Alliance. Each of those cities, the college and the port, provides some funding to our program. The city of Federal Way is a partner that provides some funding and then we're able to take those dollars, go back to the SBDC and get a dollar-for-dollar match to bring back to our community. So last year at Highline, we served just over 400, had just over 400 client meetings. You can see that we helped them create just around 50 jobs, five business starts. And then the capital impacts, which are loans that they secured or capital investment they made in their business, was just over $7 million last year. For the city of Des Moines, last year, we had 75 client meetings and 25 unique clients. And so I'd like to describe that for you a little bit. Many of our clients are not a one-time visit. In fact, we find when we look at our data that it takes about four or five times working with a client before we can really help them get the impacts that they're after. So we'd like to measure that both ways. We spent just around 69 hours in service to individual businesses last year here in the city, about 142,000 in capital and loans. This year, we're at 17. This is, these numbers were just a few weeks ago. 17 client meetings, nine unique clients, and 15 hours. So you might be asking why the big difference in the numbers? And it's because we're like all the other businesses right now, we're short-staffed. So we lost a key advisor who's been with us about 13 years. She left in December and we're still trying to replace that position. So this, these are the results year-to-date for the city. And what I'd like to do and take just the last few minutes and share with you an example about how we work with a client, with our clients. And these are some of the questions that I get asked often. How do I find employees? That's a big one that we're all hearing right now. I need help marketing my business. How do I start a business? Some people want to start a full-time business. Some want to do a side hustle and just kind of give some security for where they're at now. We have a lot of people asking about buying or selling businesses. We're not certified to value a business, but we have people that we can refer them to or we can help them assess the value of some of these businesses. A lot of them, I'm getting a number of questions lately on the second from the bottom. How do I restructure my business to provide equity to key employees? We're finding in this market where people really want to hang on to their employees, they're not being quite so stingy and they're sharing some of that wealth with their employees, which I think is a great, great sign. And the last one, we're asked quite often for referrals. And one that's coming up more and more is referrals to someone who can develop an app for the businesses. More and more are moving online. But no one said business is easy and no one can guarantee the outcomes. But to be successful, we know that you have to develop an individual plan. And that's where the SBDC comes in. We help them evaluate their situation, look at their objectives, set a strategy that aligns with their personal values and the mission of their business, create that plan, execute that plan, and then we help them track that. And I'd like to just show you a tool that we use. This actually comes from a training program that we offer. It's called Profit Mastery and this is a business assessment test. It's not to measure you, but to kind of help you set a baseline. And it helps a business owner evaluate themselves in these five categories. HR and personnel, sales and marketing, operations, financials, and executive challenge. And it's fairly simple. The way it works is it has a list of systems and processes and the owner will just walk through that and mark the box if they have that system in place. So an example might be, I know my company's break-even sales amount on a monthly, yearly basis. So they do that for these different categories. There's also the human resources side. And then they count those up and they log it on this chart. And then my question to them is, where do you want to start? And because it really becomes pretty obvious what, they know what their business needs, they can see where they're assessing themselves. And then we come back and we reevaluate that situation on a, usually a semi-annual basis. Again, it's up to them. But I can give you an example of how this worked for one of the clients that I've worked with. About eight years ago, a client came to me. They're a, they're a small construction company, also do some architecture design work. They started in 2008. They were doing about $750,000 a year, two owners. They were working at least 80 hours a week. They were 60 days behind in invoicing and longer than that in their collections. Had eight employees. They were doing some custom homes. Then they're probably about $800,000. Now, we all know they're probably three to four million. And they were doing remodels, $15,000 to $50,000. And just by going through some of these tools, they realized that we can't continue at those kind of rates. So they changed their model, they continued to do those services, but they stopped doing those smaller remodels. They still do remodels. They're probably running between $250,000 and $500,000 for a remodel now. Custom homes are probably two to four million. They've also opened up a development company for themselves. And this year, I just had a conversation with one of the business owners a couple weeks ago. They think they're on track this year to do between six and eight million. They're profitable. These owners are young guys, so they're still working 80 hours a week, I'm sure. But they've got the business where they want it. They've got some key employees and they've moved forward. So that's an example of how we started using this particular tool. But it's, the work we do is really driven by the business. They said, here's where I want some help and we come along and see how we can help them accomplish that. So that's our, that's what we do at the SBDC. If you've know of businesses who could use our assistance, please let them know about us, refer us along. And here's my contact information. And we also have an 800 number at a state level where we can take calls and they will, they will find them, an advisor that's close to them. So thank you very much. I can take any questions if I have time.
City Manager Mathias, you want to make a statement before we ask questions?
Yeah, this is a profound thank you for your, for the work that you do. We've always appreciated partnership with you. And Council, do you have any questions for Mr. Shockley?
Deputy Mayor Buckston.
Thanks for being here, Rich. So could you describe how the, how the city support, or how you work with the city and how we support you? I mean, like through Soundside and through the college? How do we, how do those two avenues connect?
Sure. Again, Soundside Alliance is a group of cities and partners. Highline College is one of those partners. Soundside Alliance was the first group who said, we want somebody here to work with our small businesses. And so Soundside Alliance together, came together, provided some funding and then the college provided the structural support and they also contribute financially. And so that's how we were launched. Each city provides funding to our center. We get a lot of referrals from the people who know us at the city. I do work with Eric quite a bit. We do a lot of work together. So I'm referred in. I try to speak at different business, community events as well so that they can know about us and hear. Is that, can I tell you what you're looking for, Tracy? Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Councilmember Steinmetz.
It's probably more of a comment than a question, but, you know, I had my own small business for 23 years and boy, I wish I had known of you guys on several occasions. This is a fantastic service. A lot of people go into business. I'm an attorney. That doesn't mean I know how to run a business and there was nothing in law school about the nuts and bolts of doing that. So I think that's a great service to the community. I'm glad we're supporting it.
Great, thank you. And we appreciate your continued support and it's been great financial support and we get a number of referrals from the city and that's how we can really engage with your business community. So thank you for doing that.
Councilmember Oxegar, do you have any questions?
Uh, I don't, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I just like to add as you're walking, go ahead and go seated. But thank you for coming to the What's Up Des Moines event where we got a lot of the business in the community and you were able to inform them and offer them the service. I'm hoping that some of them take you up on that. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mayor. So we're gonna move on, gonna ask Nicole to do an update on Parks Recreation, Senior Services update for the summer. We've talked about this quite a bit. We're closer to summer events now, so Nicole's gonna give us a brief update. Thank you.
All right, do I use the clicker or do I use my, oh, the down button? Okay, all right. Thank you, City Manager Mathias. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Nicole Nordholm, Director of Parks Recreation and Senior Services. It's nice to be here in person. I'm used to just pressing unmute, so bear with me while I work this thing. I'm here to give you just a brief update on some of the summer events we have going on. As I've mentioned in previous meetings, we have a lot that we've brought back and we're very excited for the summer ahead. First and foremost, we started camp back this past Tuesday. So we are located at the Field House. We're running through the end of summer and we're there all day, 6:30 in the morning to 6:00 at night, two different age groups. And this first week, we have about 40 kids registered and we're looking to expand as the summer goes on. Our staff has done a tremendous job of organizing weekly themes. We have a lot of field trips coming up and so, yeah, we're just very excited to be back. This coming week, or yeah, June 27th, is the first of our STEM camps that I had mentioned. We're partnering with Playwell Technologies. So there'll be three different STEM camps this summer, also located at the Field House. We also enjoy our partnership with Skyhawk. So there are a number of multi-sport camps going on this summer. I think right now, let's see, the Mini Hawk Camp right now is baseball, flag football, and soccer. And then we'll have some cheer camps, tennis, and basketball later on in the summer. Fourth of July, so we are pleased to be sponsoring the Fourth of July fireworks this year. The city has made preparations for crowd management, parking support, access, and emergency services. Destination Des Moines will be providing the actual firework display. And then entertainment and concessions will be on the Quarterdeck property. So that should be fun. We also, Waterland Weekend is back and so plans for that are in the works. This will be July 22nd through 24th and more details will come on that. National Night Out is set for Tuesday, August 2nd. This is a great event planned by the Des Moines Police Foundation, Reach Out Des Moines, and the Parks Department, as well as a number of other community partners. So there will be a barbecue as well as a movie in the park, or a movie up there will be shown at dusk. We also are bringing back the Movies in the Park. I believe last summer, the one planned had to be canceled due to, I think, smoke or weather. So we have two planned for Down at the Beach Park and then the third will be up at the National Night Out that I just mentioned. National Night Out that I just mentioned. The Summer Concert Series Wednesday night starts July 6th. And I just want to give a mention to Ashley Young, our Events Manager. She with, in collaboration with the Arts Commission, has done a fantastic job of putting together this concert series. So just check back, you know, social media for more updates. I also wanted to mention in communication with her, the Des Moines Beach Park Event Center this year, they currently are seeing their busiest season yet. So they have rental requests and just with the return of the Ailey Camp through the Seattle Theater Group, as well as a substantial number of rentals. They are, as we all know, not fully staffed and also just working through just a really busy season, which is commendable. We are also quite grateful for the Des Moines Area Food Bank. So every year, they provide meals to go for kids, as well as through the pandemic, they were doing groceries to go for seniors. So as you can see from this list, they've expanded their programs and are at all of these locations, providing meals for the community, which is really wonderful. And, oh, I thought I had a end slide. That's all I have for you. If you have any questions, and we hope to see you all at a lot of our summer events. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Nicole. I think that, that as we previously informed the counsel, the challenge and the difficulty, you know, involved with COVID, but trying to come out of that was to find sufficient staffing to do these programs. And I think Nicole and AJ and a lot of people have worked really hard to find both seasonal staff, temporary staff, and permanent staff to try and help us do this. So this is the result of a lot of work in a short period of time to make available these programs in the community, and we really appreciate that. And I think one that you mentioned, and is especially, I think, important for all of us, is the Seattle Theater Group Alvin Ailey Summer Dance Camp, so for the kids. So we're delighted that they're here for, I think, their third year now, and they've got a few more years on their contract. So we love seeing them. And with that, counsel, if there are any questions?
Councilmember Nutting?
Can you put the last slide back up, please? Just wanted to add a little bit of clarification. On those, that timeframe, are, is that Monday through Friday for the ones that don't have Saturday listed in front of them?
Yes. The two different times as well. So for instance, the first one, Field House Park, the first time is lunch, and then the second, the 3:30 to 3:45, is snacks. So a lot of the locations, they'll do lunch service and then come back and serve snack, which is really great.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Harris?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, this may be one of those crystal ball things, and so apologies in advance, but the hiring challenges, especially in the Parks Department, is there some kind of horizon for when that's expected to, you know, sort of vaguely get back to normal? Or is it still just too far out to, is it getting better?
I would say it is getting better. We were able to hire staff to, for summer camp. I mean, we're definitely not at full capacity, but we have more and more people that are interested. But yeah, I wouldn't be able to speak to when it would be back to normal, if you will.
No, I'm just trying to think in terms of just the residents' expectations as to like, you know, it could be another year, for example, or even two, which is, you know, is the job market going to stay like this? It's not, it's not, I'm not trying to create any pressure. It's just something that people, they ask about this all the time. And it would be, it's just easier to be able to say, yeah, you know, it's going to be this way for a year, or six months, or what have you, so that they just remain calm and so on.
Yeah, I think, council member, that it's pretty difficult to try to isolate Des Moines from the national macroeconomic picture, where labor shortages and demand on labor are very, very tight right now. So to say for residents or whoever, what the, what the expectation is out of the context of what's happening with the national economy is literally impossible to do.
Yeah, no, I'm just wondering, I'm just, you know what?
There we go. Another apology. It's, I'm just thinking in terms of just, is there any kind of national trend or, you know, anything in that regard? But yeah, thank you very much.
Deputy Mayor Buxton, did you have your hand up?
Oh, I'm just so impressed with the hustle. And thank you for, for working that. I know a lot of community members were concerned as summer was coming up that there weren't going to be enough things to do in our parks. And this is quite an array that spans different places in the community, and I'm excited about several of those things. I'm like racing to put certain things into my calendar. So yeah, thank you so much. A lot of work looks like went into all of this. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Pennington?
Thank you. We, you know, we had kind of a conversation about this, I think, a couple of months ago. And, and, and man, you got, you and your team have really hit it out of the park, and I think it's great. So thank you very much for doing that. It's, it's cool. Good, nice to see.
Councilmember Steinmetz?
Yeah, I just kind of want to reiterate on, on that, that, you know, we, we asked you some tough questions a couple of months ago, and, and you've answered them. This is excellent. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions, and then I'll get to Councilmember Oxger's opportunity. So were you able to get some of the hires as local, like maybe Mount Rainier kids or something like that?
I believe so. We, a lot of them were referred from, that had worked past years. But then there were, I think, Councilmember Nutting connected us with some school, and then there were a few that we were able to recruit through school district.
Fantastic. Just exciting to see they get the opportunity. Councilmember Oxger, do you have any questions?
No, I don't, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Nicole. Great job. I'd like to, to move on and have Susan give us an update on the Sustainable Airport Master Plan, where we are. We've not heard a lot about this recently, unfortunately, but Susan, thank you.
Thank you, City Manager Mathias. Good evening, City Council, Mayor Susan Caesar, Chief Strategic Officer. And I'm going to give you a brief update about the Sustainable Airport Master Plan Near-Term Projects Environmental Review. Next slide, please. So just a little bit of history. Between 2015 and 2018, the Port of Seattle actually completed the Sustainable Airport Master Plan, or the SAM, and they issued a determination of significance scoping notice and completed the scoping for the near-term projects environmental review. So that's essentially determining what will be included in the environmental documents. In 2018, the City of Des Moines entered into an interlocal agreement with a couple of our fellow cities, Burien, Normandy Park, and C-TAC, to coordinate on the review of those environmental documents. The four cities have contracted with expert consultants to help us in that review. And we combined, submitted some scoping comments jointly, and we also, the City of Des Moines also submitted their separate comments at that time. In 2020, we updated the interlocal agreement to transfer the administration to the City of Des Moines due to a retirement at the City of C-TAC. And then last year, we amended the consultant contract to extend the date due to delays and added some additional funds. Next slide, please. So in the meantime, we've been monitoring. We continue to attend meetings and keep up to date on what's happening with the SAM and the environmental review. We keep in contact with consultants and with the other cities to get ready for the issuance and the comment period. We are also monitoring the compliance of the Port of Seattle with the National Environmental Policy Act and the State Environmental Policy Act as they proceed with capital projects. Next slide, please. So the original information that came out from the Port of Seattle and the FAA was that the, the, both of the, the federal document and the state document would be combined, and they would issue one environmental document. And that process was to be complete in winter of 2019. There have been several delays, and actually just of last night, this is the most recent information, there's another delay. So they also split apart the issuance of the National Environmental Policy Act Environmental Assessment from the State Environmental Policy Act Environmental Impact Statement. So the, the environmental assessment, the NEPA document, will be issued first. The target date until yesterday was October of this year, and now it's delayed to 2023. And they will be updating the schedule, so stay tuned for more detail on when that will be. The, and now the SEPA, the State Environmental Document, will follow that National Environmental Document, and those dates are as yet undetermined. And so according to the port and the information that they put out, the reasons for the delay, COVID, workload, retirements, updating planning information, agency consultation, consultation, and the need for additional analysis. Next slide, please. So what happens next? Once the National Environmental Assessment is issued, we will coordinate with the consultants and the other cities to submit joint comments. We will also do some comments that are specific to the City of Des Moines if we need to, and that is now anticipated in 2023. So, and then we'll go through the same process or similar one when the State Environmental Policy Act Environmental Impact Statement is issued. And again, schedule is undetermined. So I've been the one that's been tracking this with great pleasure. And now it will be Community Development Director Denise Lethrop going forward. And that's what I have. Any questions?
Yeah, Susan, thank you. You've done a great job of tracking this. We've participated as a city. We've participated with the joint cities. We've participated with the consultants on behalf of the cities. And we look forward, this provides us, the SAM process, what Susan's describing relative to SEPA and NEPA, are the opportunities in the SAM process where the cities have legal standing to comment. And we've taken advantage of that with the scoping, and we anticipate taking advantage of that, both individually and as, as part of larger regional grouping, to comment on the SAM. And to, we, you know, have concern, we have concerns about the manner, manner in which this has been done by the port and the airport. And it appears as though that there have been some near-term projects broken out of the total projects of the, of the SAM. And we're not, we're not clear that that environmentally follows the, the protocols. But we'll be looking at all of that carefully, and we will keep counsel as we have been involved in this as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Do you, does council have any questions? Councilmember Harris?
Just a quick comment. I, I salute you for basically trying to keep track of all of this. I don't think the public has even a clue as to how many revisions this thing has gone through. You, it's just like, it's ridiculous. Like every month, the guy would show up with a slightly different presentation and slightly different options. And, and every time it gets dragged out more, it's like keeping the energy and concentration and focus. It's, yeah, well done. Thank you.
Councilmember Steinmetz?
Yeah, and this is, if you, if you know the answer, but have there been any steps taken so that when we do submit our comments, when the comment period finally gets around to opening, to assess the both environmental and noise pollution impacts of the expanded airport? And if so, what, what are we doing to collect that data? And how can people help?
So we are expert consultants, which Bonnie has put up the Primacy Strategy Group in ABC times two. They, they have experts on their staff, and that's the reason we've contracted with them. So they will review all the available data. They will review the environmental document, and they will help us with the technical aspects of commenting on the documents.
And just a second question, if you don't mind. Does this delay process, as Councilmember Harris referred to, there's always something different? Is that actually putting this expansion of the airport off further into the future? Or is it more, in your opinion, is there some other purpose to it? So is there a benefit to Des Moines to this delay?
So, I mean, that's a hard question to answer, because I think the port, you know, technically can't proceed with projects that are in the SAM absent the environmental review. Having said that, they, you know, they are taking some interim steps to do some design work and that kind of thing. So it's hard to say whether this will result in an actual delay or just, you know, it's just hard to, to say. That would be a question for the port, I guess.
Thank you.
Also, council member, if I may, the COVID set them back in terms of activity at the airport. The issues you raised, noise, you know, quality of sort of air quality, all of those aspects are part of this environmental review. And so its impacts, and we've always characterized Des Moines and our sister cities that we suffer disproportionate impacts of the operations of the airport. And the further away from the airport you get, the more the balance is toward economic development as opposed to impacts. We who are adjacent to the airport suffer those impacts with some benefit, economic development benefits. And so those are the kind of issues that we're going to want to raise as we go through this environmental review process.
Deputy Mayor Buxton?
Thank you, Mayor. Two questions. So you mentioned about some projects being eliminated from the scoping, the, and I, with our comments or things that, do you foresee the possibility of some of those projects being reincorporated into, into the plan?
So what, what the port has done is they completed the entire SAM. So those documents are on the website, and you can go on and you can look at the entire project. They have split off what they're calling the near-term projects and are only doing the environmental review on those near-term projects at this time. So I don't think that that means that those other projects won't proceed. They will, according to the port, when they are ready for environmental review and enough information is available, they will proceed on another environmental review of those projects. We have questions, and so have the other cities that process.
And, thank you. And then, do you, do you know or can you answer the, the comments that we'll be submitting? Are we, do you think we will be looking for mitigation or possible even elimination of projects or, or delay of projects? Or a combination?
Yeah, that's, again, that's hard to speculate at this point, because we haven't seen the environmental documents. And, you know, all those would probably be on the table, depending on what is, you know, what we see in, in the environmental document when it's issued.
Okay. Thank you, Susan.
No, not unless, then, questions?
Councilmember Oxger, did you have any questions? I just, I also thank you for your work. I think it is speculative. The best thing we are doing is, I think you guys are out there trying to get Plan A, B, C, D, and E together all at the same time, not knowing which kind of game plan we're going to get tossed at us, for lack of a better analogy. So thank you for your efforts there.
Thanks, Susan. And finally, counsel, I'd like to just walk through an update on Marina redevelopment and have a PowerPoint. So we've been in the process, and this was done at the end of last year. The city had, we'd gone through a extensive process of planning, and at the direction of counsel, had issued a request for qualifications, received the inputs from those, went through a selection process. a selection process, recommended to council that we move forward with a team that is managed by Mr. Lauren Cohen, who developed Point Ruston in Tacoma. And council directed me to work with the chosen developer and to establish an exclusive negotiating agreement. So we went through, we went forward with that, and after extensive negotiations with the developer, we reached an agreement at the end of March 2022. When we completed the NA, the developer and his team visited Des Moines, visited our team, Susan, Dan, a number of us involved with this. And we did a working discussion, sharing our vision that council had approved, that was in a lot of the studies done previously, that started to determine a process to move forward. The developer came to City Hall, met the mayor, deputy mayor, councilmember Nutting was there, and they provided $35,000 check of good faith funds that's put in an escrow account and can be utilized for future development costs, or a portion of that could be forfeited if they did not move forward with the process. We contracted with independent legal counsel, people very skilled in development issues, working closely with myself and city attorney George in negotiations with the developer. So then city staff who were involved in the development process, we did a tour of Point Ruston, where we met with the developer and his team, and once again, had the opportunity to share mutual vision for Des Moines redevelopment, and to understand the strategy and how they went about developing Point Ruston, which was the previous Osarco site. And they put millions and millions of dollars into cleanup and have phenomenal development there at this time. So we are planning that in group, small groups, that we will try and organize tours of council members to visit Point Ruston, spend time with the developer, understanding the strategy, how he intends to go about things. And then we continue to provide tours to potential developers and potential tenants of the Marina. We're working toward a development agreement that would, brought to council for approval, and that development agreement would have all of the aspects of development on the Marina floor. Location, size, scale, zoning, utilities, all the challenges that exist, access, vehicular access, environmental concerns, all of that would be part of the development agreement that we're currently working on to, to bring to council. At the same time, we also anticipate that this process that we're in, as we move forward, identifying elements of the development agreement, that we will have significant opportunities for public comment and input on the process, and that council can both observe those opportunities and receive, you know, input from us as to what, as to what actually occurred. Next one, please. So, in order to facilitate Marina redevelopment, I've made a number of changes in the city organizational chart to help us focus on that. I created a position titled Chief of Staff, and that is going to be awarded to Bonnie Wilkins. And she will be the, kind of the filter for a lot of information that comes to the city, comes to me. And she will continue her duties in terms of working on communications. We will have a new city clerk, is going to be Tara Keena, our current Assistant City Clerk, so she'll go through a learning process to do that. I'm really happy to announce that we'll be establishing a point of contact for day-to-day development process and implementation of our city vision. That will be titled the Executive Director of Marina Redevelopment. That'll be Mr. Dan Brewer, who has just done an incredible job for us in his, in his own work with Sound Transit. He'll be continuing that till it comes to completion, and slowly shifting his attention away from daily operations to focusing on Marina redevelopment. Position will coordinate the water side and land side. As you know, Dan has been very involved with Scott, looking at dock replacement, all the capital projects involved with that. The land side will have capital investment as well. So Dan will work closely with the harbor master and myself and our capital development team. And the emphasis will be in establishing opportunities also for public input and marketing the Marina redevelopment dynamic. So we think those two things go hand in hand. And finally, excuse me, a little difficult, but Susan's leading us to go off to a happy retirement. And she's just done a phenomenal job, as I think everyone here knows. We wish you all the best. We're sorry to see you go. We're happy that you're going to be able to enjoy grandchildren and, and other aspects of, of your life, and we will be awarding you a plaque at some future point. And that concludes my presentation.
Questions, comments? I'll start with Councilmember Harris.
Well, first of all, congratulations, Susan. You've done a lot of stuff with, it's, everybody at the city wears many hats, but it's, it's clear, there's a lot of good voices. But to Marina, as a functional matter, what does, what does the reorg, specifically with Dan Brewer, like? How does that express itself day to day? Is it like, okay, I'm going to allocate X amount of hours specifically to Marina work every day? Or, I mean, yeah, I just, you understand the question?
Yeah, I do. I mean, there's, there's a couple of ways to look at that. Probably the simplest way is just that, as Dan has worked for cooperatively and on behalf of the city with Sound Transit, Sound Transit has provided a significant amount of his salary. When the council approved American Rescue Plan Act funds of the $9 million distributed, it, 1.75 million of that went to the Marina. So we will use a portion of that as soft cost to pay for the portion of his salary that's focused on Marina redevelopment. And those will slowly, if they're in balance over time, the Marina will become the, the more weighted engagement with Dan, and Sound Transit will be, you know, moving on to federal way as they, on their way south. So the, the thing about development of any kind, but especially in, in our situation, adjacent to the water, there's multiple jurisdictional controls on this, SEPA, the shoreline master plan, other things like that, there are a million details. And Dan will encounter those details every day, and will walk through what the work plan needs to be to address them. And, and he's, you know, I didn't go into this too much, but one thing about Dan is he's an engineer, excellent engineer, but also understands politics and finance. That's, it's almost, you'd have to have almost chromosomal damage for that to actually occur. but, no, but he's just a very extraordinarily talented manager and knowledgeable person, has been involved in our capital. Every year that we've done the budget, in the end, Dan and myself and Beth Anne sit down with all department heads and walk through what the operating budget looks like, the capital budget, all of that. So he will be devoting as much time as necessary to help move the process forward.
And, okay, so one, just, hopefully, follow-up, just as a matter of continuity, I mentioned the complexity of the SAM. How is that succession? Or is it too early to consider that?
No, I think Susan mentioned it. The succession is going to be that Denise Lathrop, our Community Development Director, will pick that up. Her experience is long-term planning primarily, and the SAM kind of qualifies within that, but she's also very knowledgeable in SEPA, NEPA, with the National Environmental Policy Act. And I think she'll pick it up, and there, there won't be a, you know, a heartbeat difference in, in how we go about it. Susan did a great job, but, but Denise has been involved and aware of what's going on, and will continue that.
Councilmember Pennington?
First off, congratulations, Susan. It's cool, I'm telling you. And, and, and everyone else, congratulations on your, on your promotions. But one thing, you know, one thing I want to point out is, our, our staff is really agile. If you look in, in, just in, in the last couple of years, the movement within the staff, the, the succession planning and the ability for one person to come into another person's job, and, and with just minimal, you know, getting up to speed, you know, and that speaks to the, the city manager's change when he took away the siloing of the different departments and, and the folks within, within the city and his staff. And so now everybody, you know, i- is, is, is working together, they're working across divisional lines, and, and this is, this is the end result. This is what you get when, when you make those types of changes. So, so thank you to the entire city staff, you know, for, for being flexible and, and embracing that change a few years ago. And thank you to the city manager and, and previous councils that had also supported that and supported, supported you, and this current council for the, the continued support as, as, as the folks that carry the water go forward. So, thank you very much.
Deputy Mayor Buxton?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a special place in my heart for Susan. I mean, she came on board about the same time I did, and we graduated from high school the same year, and, but, just my, my assignments that I've received since been, being elected have really coincided with her expertise. And so I've had a lot of fabulous opportunities to, to visit with her and get educated about all sorts of, about housing, community development, zoning, building, affordable housing, growth management, policy, all of these things that kind of ended up putting me on the spot. And if I didn't have Susan, you know, to just go back to, help me out here, I'm going to be in this meeting, and what, what does our city do? What can our city do? And I, it's been, I don't even know how to say how thankful I am, how the support that she's given me, and no question was too dumb. I mean, literally, we've heard that since we were in elementary school, but I always felt that with Susan, that she never made me feel, you know, humiliated in any way with my questions or my lack of understanding. And she, that, she's got a fabulous gift, and I am, I am, I am happy for you, but I am sad for myself. So, thank you so much, Susan. It's, you're, have been such an amazing gift to our city and to me.
Councilmember Steinmetz?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, Susan, I, I've known you for many years and watched your, your development and your progress here in the city, and it's really, you've taken on a lot of things, and congratulations to you. You will, you will be missed. You know, I want to say to Dan, thanks for willing, being willing to get immersed in the details again. You know, you've shown an amazing ability to keep your head above water in what is a lot of details. Yeah, it's close, but, you know, I, I, I'm glad that you're willing to do that. And everybody else, you know, congratulations on promotions. I, I hope that, you know, job descriptions will be available so we can all have the full understanding of what the expectations of the jobs are going to be. And, you know, it sounds like this is a pretty good step in deploying the people that work for this city in a way that takes advantage of their talents and meets the needs of the city, though. Thank you.
Councilmember Oxger, do you have any questions or comments? Councilmember Oxger?
I'm sorry. Well, it's, it's always an interesting situation when people retire. You know, they've put in a long service and all that. We all wish everybody well when they're moving on, and so, Susan, I wish you well. I, to be quite honest, I'm still trying to digest the scope of this, so I will withhold comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Oxger. I, I would like to say that somebody that's regularly, recently been making lots of changes in my, my job, and some of the personnel involved in that because of the changing dynamics and economics, and who shops online in stores and so forth, I really appreciate the fact that seeing a city which is, which most people would perceive as slow to moving and being able to adapt, this is the opposite of that, so I compliment you. Susan, I about, I was just about to make a motion that you can't leave, that you have to stay here forever. I'll just say that much because you're that valuable to this community, but I know that we're in good hands with Denise. And, Mr. Brewer, we've worked together closely on 509, Sound Transit, and so many other things, and I couldn't be more confident that as we really move to one of the most key things that's going to happen in this community in the last 60-some years, that you're going to be in the driver's seat of helping make that go forward. So an excellent choice. And not, last but not least is Bonnie, man. I, I think this is an excellent opportunity. You've done a great job as a city clerk, but to get this opportunity, I'm thrilled for. And I know you'll make us proud and do well, and keep me straight.
Mayor, joyfully, that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you. I wanted to acknowledge that the newly appointed Highline School Board member, Azib Hagos, was here earlier, and unfortunately, she'd missed the public comment, and I was going to open up the floor once we can completed this portion, but she must have had to go to another meeting or something like that. We'll make the effort to invite her to another meeting in the future, so I just wanted to say that at this point. With that, could I have the city clerk read the consent agenda?
Item one, approval of vouchers. Item two, approval of minutes. And item three, lodging tax advisory committee appointment. And that concludes the consent calendar, Mayor.
Thank you. Is there anyone that wishes to pull an item? Did I get that backwards? Maybe. Oh, is, is there a motion for the consent agenda?
So moved.
My bad.
Second.
Second, by, so, motion made by Councilmember Nutting, or seconded by Deputy Mayor Buxton. Kind of used to having things polled a few times, so, sorry, little gun shy. Is there anyone that wishes to pull an item? Seeing none? All those?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, okay, I apologize. Yes, I should have asked you. Councilmember Oxger, do you wish to pull an item?
I wish to pull item three.
Okay, item three is pulled. So the consent agenda will be voted on on items one and two. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. I see the six of us. Councilmember Pennington, Councilmember Harris, Councilmember Steinmetz, Deputy Mayor Buxton, Councilmember Nutting, myself, and then independently, Councilmember Oxger, do you approve consent agendas, eyes one and two?
Yes, I do.
Okay. With that, they pass seven zero. Item three, you have the floor, sir.
Yes, the reason I pulled this, I'm concerned, first that, that I was not aware that there was another vacancy on the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. And I'm wondering, you know, what the notification process for this was. And in general, I had asked prior to the last meeting for a list of, of what advisory committee positions do we have open, and also, you know, what we're doing as far as advertising that these are available. One of the things that I found out, I think I've said this before, is that on the, on the campaign trail when I was door knocking, I'm, I'm really impressed by the, the abundance of expertise that we have in the community. And, you know, in talking to some of these people, they'd be willing to lend their, their assistance in an advisory capacity, but they're not aware of these positions being open. So it is more or less a comment, just saying, I, I really think we need to open this up and, and let people know that there are opportunities beyond elective office to actually, you know, be of service to their community. Thank you.
I would like to comment on this. I actually, um, reached out to Mr. Doug Meyer, Myers, and asked him if he would consider this. It was a recent resignation and there's a need to have this committee meet in the near future. Mr. Myers is a pillar in this community. He, he runs the What's Up Des Moines. He's been doing great and excellent work, um, bringing our businesses together. And it just seemed to be in the discussion with leadership in the city and so forth that he was a, was an awesome choice in this regard. With, with your comments, that's something we can consider and speak about to later. But in the immediate need of this particular appointment, uh, I think he's the right choice and a great choice for, um, what this process would be. Any other comments, questions? Councilmember Harris.
Well, just, yeah, it, it, it's always a bit awkward because, um, you know, you, uh, to make any comment regarding the process writ large, uh, runs the risk of somehow impugning the, uh, you know, the, the appointment under consideration. And, uh, Mr. Myers, uh, you know, is, uh, obviously well-regarded in the community and so forth. But that said, um, it, it's simply the case that if you go back to our old website from nineteen ninety-six, you would see every advisory committee, their memberships, their quarterly work product. And, um, and that alone inspired confidence in the community and, uh, you know, created the opportunities because people could go. And most people don't even know the, that certain advisory committees exist. And we should fix that. But all that said, uh, yeah, of course, I will, uh, vote for Mr. Myers. Thank you.
Is there any more comments or questions? With that?
I would say.
Okay. Your second time. Go ahead, Councilmember Oxger.
Uh, yes, I just want to make it clear that I'm no way, you know, questioning, you know, the appointment of, uh, uh, Mr. Myers. Uh, again, it's process and I, you know, that's what I want to emphasize is that, you know, the more we open these up, and, and one of the comments that has been made in the past is that, uh, you know, uh, the willingness of people to step forward to run for council. And a lot of people cut their teeth on these advisory committees. And so I think, you know, making, making the information available is, is highly appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Oxger. With that, I'll take the vote. All those in favor of, oh, I need a motion. Yes, you're, I'll make the motion. Motion to confirm the mayoral appointment of Doug Myers to the lodging tax advisory committee effective immediately.
Second.
Councilmember Steinmetz has the second on that one. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. I see Councilmember Pennington, Councilmember Harris, Councilmember Steinmetz, Deputy Mayor Buxton, Councilmember Nutting, myself. Councilmember Oxger, how do you vote?
Aye.
Aye, in the affirmative. The, the motion passes seven zero. If, for just so you, under, the audience, the public under, audience understands, the reason why I'm calling out everybody's votes is so he can understand what's been done and who's voted which way. With that being said, we will move on to the public hearing, uh, for the Transportation Improvement Plan. I believe, um, um, it'll be you, Tommy? Okay, Tommy will be giving us the presentation. Uh, I will now open the public hearing. And please proceed with the presentation. Thank you.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Uh, Tommy Owen, City Engineer. Uh, this evening I'll be presenting the public hearing for the twenty twenty-three through twenty forty-two Transportation Improvement Plan. All right, so what is the Transportation Improvement Plan, or better known as the TIP? It is a prioritized list of ninety-one planned transportation projects that is not financially constrained. Uh, it is derived from the Comprehensive Transportation Plan, which is a long-range transportation plan that sets policies, goals, and strategies to help guide decisions over the next twenty years for existing and future transportation systems. Uh, it also defines a manageable network of arterial roadways, priority pedestrian networks, priority bicycle networks, and transit service priorities to support the city. So now how do projects get into the TIP? Uh, the TIP is based on safety, capacity, pedestrian, bicycle, and transit needs. Uh, we also take in analysis of the city's transportation system based on traffic engineering studies that are performed by staff. A lot of that is based on citizen input and concerns that we receive on a weekly basis. We also, um, prioritize projects with other agencies throughout the region, um, such as, um, other cities, um, Sound Transit, WashDOT, and also our franchise utilities. So how is the TIP used? So the TIP provides direction to staff for the development of the six-year capital improvement plan, uh, which prioritizes, uh, planning and coordination, uh, with utilities and neighboring cities. Uh, the TIP is required by state law, uh, to be submitted to both WashDOT and PSRC on an annual basis. And one, and another important aspect of the TIP is that it positions projects for future grants and loans. Uh, most loan applic-, most grant and loan applications require cities' projects to be within the TIP, uh, for submittal. So the process, uh, so we, um, published a public notice in the Seattle Times on both June ninth and sixteenth. There will be the opportunity for public comment at tonight's hearing. And from the public notice, we have not received any public comments so far. So some of the, uh, TIP accomplishments and highlights for twenty twenty-two. Uh, so priority one, the pavement management, pavement preservation program. Uh, we've been collaborating, um, for the last couple of years now with Lake Haven Water and Sewer District, uh, for the improvement of, uh, Lower Woodmont. Uh, we've repaved a majority of the streets in that neighborhood. And that is, uh, that's kind of wrapped up in the last month. Um, this year we'll also be doing an overlay in ADA improvements on Redondo Beach Drive, as well as an overlay on Wood, uh, Woodmont Drive. Priority two, the Traffic Safety Improvement Program. We'll be installing, uh, additional Woodmont driver feedback sign installations. Priority three, ADA compliance program, uh, continued trip hazard removal and ADA curb ramp replacement throughout the city. And both priority four and priority six, the North Marina, the North Marina Bulkhead as well as Sound Transit Light Link light rail are under construction. So some of the proposed revisions from last year's TIP. Uh, priority eight, the Barnes Creek Trail South Segment. We've updated the descrip- non-motorized corridor improvements. South side of two forty. Priority thirteen on College Way. We've re-prioritized from priority twenty-three to better align with the project construction scheduled for twenty twenty-three. Then priority forty-eight, uh, the Sixteenth Avenue Improvements Project. Uh, we've re-prioritized that from, uh, priority twenty-nine. Due to some recent developer-installed roadway and shoulder. We've re-prioritized that from, uh, priority twenty-nine. So that concludes my recommend, uh, that concludes my presentation. And I've left, left the recommended motion.
We're getting feedback from Councilmember Oxger's, uh, side, so, um, do I have a motion? What's that? Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, you're right. My bad. We, I do have to call out for, uh, any kind of, uh, public comment. Is there any public comment? Second chance? Third and final time, not seeing any? And now questions of the, questions of the council? So is there any questions? Councilmember Harris, you may go first.
Um, so to, the second one may not be your main. Can you, uh, describe the, uh, prioritization scheme? Yeah, what goes into that and how much, how much flexibility is involved? And, and, and I'll tell you why I ask is because the public, you know, to the extent that they're aware of these things, they'll be, and I'll tell you why I ask is because the public, in a sense, it's, you know, I'll be like, no, you know, you know, a lot of these actually are vaguely equivalent in terms of urgency. And so, um, should, no, you know, this is something that's actually, you know, are vaguely equivalent. So I just would, if, if you wouldn't mind indulging just what goes into that prioritization?
Yeah, so this is really a planning-level document. And like I stated earlier, it's not financially constrained. So we look at all these projects, the ninety-one projects. And we're really focused on, I would say, about the top twenty projects for development and looking at being able to financially support those projects as we. But it's, it's really, um, these projects, we also, um, taking a lot of the public comment and concerns when we develop. We're also looking at these projects, we also, ways in which we can partner with agencies, franchise utilities, or just opportunities for, uh, applicants.
I guess, I mean, in like, you know, and maybe this is a fool's errand, but, um, what puts something into the top twenty? I guess, I mean, in like, you know. Is it just a rule of thumb or not? That may be the silliest question since ever, but, uh, just.
Yeah, I would just say that through the development with the, both the Transportation Committee and public, but, um, just that's how we've prioritized.
May I speak just for a quick moment? Andrew Mer, just Public Works Director. So the top twenty projects that you referenced typically are ones that, uh, are fully funded or likely to be funded by grants. So a lot of the stuff up in front, typically one is based on, you know, our local or state support.
The likelihood of it hap-
Exactly. The likelihood of it happening, there's a grouping on top, like the ADA stuff, the pavement preservation, uh, program in which that's an annual expenditure. A lot of those up on the very top are just median projects that will go throughout the life cycle.
Okay, second thing which may or may not be, um, at some point is, uh, First Avenue to, you know, like two oh eighth and so on. Is that going to be on the table in terms of like, more crosswalk kind of a thing? Is it going to be constrained as to, you know, being a highway and, and that? More crosswalk, people ask me all the time about constrained, about that.
Uh, that's a great question. I think from a highway perspective, I, I.
Cause I mean, wasn't it supposed to be, I mean, isn't it supposed to be like originally part of like? Deal with SR five?
Yeah, so I think, are, you're looking at the northern part of the city that has also some coordination with Normandy Park, correct?
Yeah.
I think there's been a lot of, we, we do coordinate with Normandy Park for crosswalks, uh, et cetera. And a lot of those, we usually leave up to Normandy Park across the road. And they work with WashDOT to try to see if that's viable or not.
No, I just wondered if like Wash, if WashDOT like was, or if there was some emergency thing, why that might not, cause people ask all.
Yeah, we, I mean, we do, any, any public comment we get for a crosswalk install, we do take a look at that and determine if there's warrants and, and if there's a way to move forward with it.
Yeah, I just didn't, I, I mean, I don't know. If it's a state, if it's basically prevented by the state.
No, it, I mean, it all, it all depends on, on when we have to require state review. Look at something from a channelization perspective. But typically, you know, we'll take the lead on taking a look at a crosswalk and then figuring out, okay, what do we need to involve the state or not in that decision? But typically, but that's kind of outside of the TIP itself.
No, I, I get it and thank you for indulging.
Councilmember Steinmetz.
Yeah, I, I kind of following up on this topic a little bit. Last summer, uh, there was an emergent situation, uh, on Marine View Drive. It got labeled dead man's curve and there were several accidents. Damage into the houses. And, you know, you guys were able to respond quickly. It's now very well marked, very well lit. I think it'd be hard to, and, you know, you guys were able to respond quickly. Turn, uh, which, you know, was, was the concern. And I, and I think part of what Councilmember Harris might be trying to get at is, what is the impact of the urgency of the project? How does that play in? This was a, as I, relatively low-cost response that got a really good, uh, fix in. But on the, on the plan, where does urgency come in? Do we, do we focus on dangerous corners and things like that much? And how does that factor?
I would, I would definitely say that we do. I mean, we, we focus on any sort of location where there may be a safety issue.
It's just one of many factors, is that what I'm hearing? That, that and money are the, are the main things. And I, and I get that. I'm not being critical of that at all. Uh, the other thing is, uh, a while ago, um, we had started a repaving project. That was going to be the ongoing. Is, is, is this part of what we saw in here? It seemed to be, but I wasn't absolutely clear. Are we gonna just keep painting the Golden Gate Bridge and go back to the other side when we're done? We're in a position to do consistent paving? Is that part of this plan?
Right, that, that is the goal, is to have a, a consistent paving program where we're, we're paving roads yearly.
As, as Transportation Chair, I'd want to add, priority number one is the pavement preservation program. And that's continued. I want to remind the residents of the city, there were years that went by that normal infrastructure paving was done. I will say, being the chair of the last four and a half years on the Transportation Committee, when the staff brings this to us, they usually make recommendations on what moves up priority-wise. Pay for it, it's the safe routes for schools, et cetera. One of the things that I always look at, and I know fellow members do too, do we, are we, we have projects that are scattered amongst the city, not concentrated in one particular area. And I think they do a very good job of doing that. So there's a lot to be done, obviously many pages here, twenty-five pages when I printed it out. But the idea is what can be done, what realistically can be done, what the priorities are. And it's a pretty well-scheduled deal. Now, a, as you mentioned, some urgent issues may come up. And obviously, in those cases, it seems like we're able to address those. If it's in our own city, I think it's a lot simpler than when something like two oh eighth and First Avenue, that's really in Normandy Park's jurisdiction, but on state highway, et cetera. It's a little more complicated and so forth. And, um, it's obviously something maybe Normandy Park leaves the charge on and then we would follow or something like that. But in general, this is a sound document. Uh, we've made lots of revisions over the years. This year was probably the fewest I've seen because the priorities have been the same. And what's great about it is, in the top twenty, many of them are obtainable. And that's what's really important. But having it in the documents is very key and important. Deputy Mayor Buxton.
It was just supposed to be?
You're correct, you're correct. I, I stand corrected. Do you have any questions?
No questions.
Okay. I guess I was in the mode of answering a question more than I was to, uh, so forth. I, I.
Good job, good job.
As Chair, as Chair of the Transportation Committee, I think in that case, I've kind of allowed myself that. But you're right, in the context of things, it's, uh, it's good to be reminded to keep on point. With that, uh, Councilmember Oxger, did you have any question, questions? I will now close the public hearing. Is there a motion? Councilmember Nutting.
I move to approve draft resolution number two-two dash zero-three-three, adopting the twenty twenty-three to twenty forty-two Transportation Improvement Plan, City of Des Moines.
Deputy Mayor Buxton, seconds. Any discussion? Councilmember Harris.
Yeah, just briefly, uh, I want to again thank the staff for indulging my questions. I felt like sort of a need to be at proxy for the public. The, the thing is, you know, other than public safety, people have their concerns about the roads all the time. And, uh, the thing is, you know, other than public safety, you know, people have their concerns. There's this reluctance to, um, basically push back against the TIF, the tip, a little bit. And I really liked the, you know, it's a bit over the top with the skull and crossbones thing. But I actually, um, am, I really. really encourage that kind of thing. I wish more of the public would show up, um, because it is, it's just something, this is, this is local government. So, that's it.
Excuse me, I just wanted, uh, I'm just trying to get Councilmember Oxger to mute his thing. Just so you know, one of the difficulties I have, I'm hearing other voices while I'm trying to run the meeting. It's, it's a little tough. Um, did somebody else with comments? Councilmember Pennington?
I'm hearing voices.
Yeah, I'm hearing voices in my head, man.
So, just a, a reminder, uh, I, I noticed you were talking about in 2022. A lot of comments from the public and one individual, you know, the additional speed humps to kind of slow some of the traffic down. I would just remind you that that, that has been a public comment, it has been a public concern. You got, you, you folks do, do your thing and figure it out, you know? And that's, we're all leaving at that, so, thank you.
Councilmember Oxger, do you have any questions or comments?
No.
Seeing no more comments, I'll go ahead and take a vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. I see Councilmember Pennington, Councilmember Harris, Councilmember Steinmetz, Deputy Mayor Buxton, Councilmember Nutty, myself. Councilmember Oxger, how do you vote?
Aye.
Okay, all affirmative. The motion passes 7-0. Moving on to new business, first order of new business is the draft ordinance 21-064 National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, NPDES, Source Control Best Management Practices. Sir, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Good to see everybody in person. Uh, my name is Ben Stryker, I'm a civil engineer with the city, I'm also the city's NPDES coordinator, and I'm going to present the draft ordinance regarding code changes to storm water. Chapter, the draft code. Just a brief roadmap here, uh, we're going to talk about the background, what source control is and where it's coming from, then we'll get into the motivation, talk about the scope, where this will apply, and the vision that city DAP has, what this program will look like in the future, then we'll get into the weeds just a little bit and talk about the permit requirements and some important dates. Then I want to walk through a source control inspection, what that will look like, um, in practice. And finally, we'll go over the ordinance itself with just a brief summary of how it was made and what's in it, and then show the suggested motions. So the city of Des Moines, we have a publicly owned drainage network of catch basins, pipes, ponds, vaults, things like that. We operate that as a utility through the city, and we're able to operate this utility and discharge the storm water to natural water bodies without any sort of formal like treatment facility like a wastewater, which we typically do. Part of that, and what comes along with that, we do need to have a state water quality permit to make sure that we're not sending pollution down the pipes with the storm water, and that's the National Pollution Discharge and Elimination System, also known as NPDES, that we have with the State Department of Ecology. Source control for existing developments is one of eight main requirements as part of this permit to proactively prevent pollution from entering the storm drain. And this is a new requirement from our most recent update to the practice. So what exactly does source control mean? It's a series of best management practices, these are behavioral, structural actions, and items that are known to prevent pollution from going into the storm drains, uh, just to name a few examples, behavioral things like closing your dumpster lid after you use it to prevent rain from getting in. To name a few examples, things like closing your dumpster lid, storing paint, old paint cans or like used motor oil, keeping that inside or under a cover versus just out in the open. And then a couple of structural BMPs, those are things like a catch basin, keeping that inside that filters the water as it goes through, or having a spill response kit on site that will clean up a spill that's active. Now, thinking about the scope and where this ordinance and, and the NPDES permit requirement is looking to implement, now, thinking about the control BMPs, I'm list, I'm listing here the major sources of storm water pollution based off of the land use type, basically, um, and everywhere you see the green check, that means the current program, the NPDES program in our city code, has proactive measures in place to prevent spills from happening, storm water from getting into the system. One area that does not have a green check is the commercial and retail areas, where there's not any required proactive measures in place. That's why this is becoming a new requirement from the Department of Ecology. So that doesn't necessarily mean we can't do anything on commercial and retail spaces, so our current authority and, and what is already in the city code, we're allowed to enter, so our current authorities, where there's evidence of an ongoing spill, even if it is a private storm water system, it will eventually tie into our publicly owned system. Pollution will go all the way down to the receiving water. So we have that authority, however, that method is typically ineffective and often too little, too late. Spill is already happening, the pollution's already going in the system. So the intent here is to prevent situations from the left side of the screen from happening in the first place, um, and be a little bit more proactive. So that's really the core vision here, is to work in partnership with our local businesses, provide that technical expertise, guidance to prevent pollution of our commonly used, publicly owned storm water system. And that's, on the right side, um, that is a Des Moines business, and we do currently operate a business outreach program, so that's one of the contractors that we have. I'll talk a little bit more, a few slides about that program specifically, that's in Des Moines. So I think clearly there's, there's more that we could be doing to prevent pollution. Now, getting into the weeds, um, by August 1st of this year, there's more that we need to adopt and make effective in ordinance, requiring the application of source. By August 1st, by that same date, we need to establish a business inventory to identify publicly and privately owned sites that have the potential to generate. We need to establish, I'll make a note on that, that staff does have a business sites that have already on file that, um, I'll make a note, meet permit compliance for this through that business outreach program, and that plan would be to, once the ordinance is fully in effect, update that list because it is a few years old. And changes, and make sure it's just, once the ordinance is fully comprehensive to the requirements. And then by January 1st of this upcoming year, we need to implement an inspection program to cover at least 20%. And then by January 1st of this upcoming year, we need to. So I'll walk through a typical inspection, that would, what it would look like, and I'll do it in the context of what we already do with our business outreach contractor. So everything in that blue bar is things that already do, Des Moines businesses have been seeing since about 2015, when we started that program. And then the green box there will be sort of what this ordinance puts into effect. So the contractor is going to enter the site, identify themselves, and speak to a responsible manager, the owner, if they're on site. If time allows, they will walk through the site, responsible manager, owner, talking about what sort of source control BMPs they have, things that they're doing really well, things that they could be improving on, or things that could be implemented. And then they, the contractor would provide a brief summary, along with any sort of relevant technical information, the contractor, guidance, documents that they bring with them to provide to owners, relevant technical, once they leave. Now, where the new requirement kicks in, after that site visit, the contractor, or if, if it's determined that it's a site requirement, follow up, after that detailed report for the property, and then we'll take a look at that, see, um, if their BMPs are sort of up and running. Based off of this existing business outreach program, it's probably going to be 85 to 90% of the businesses. Doing everything they can, what is really in our favor here is a lot of the source control best management practices behaviorally are just sort of standard best management practices, common sense things that people already do. No further action is required, and it really won't look at all different from what they're currently seeing in the business outreach program. And then for that small portion, let's say in an example, you know, it's a auto repair shop, and a parking lot, let's say during the inspection, the contractor notes that mechanics are working on vehicles in the parking lot during the inspection, and they're not using drip pans or something like that, that would just be a note in that report, and we would follow up with the business owner, say, you know, that would just be a note, fully able to use your parking lot, follow up with the business owner, saying, moving forward, please use a drip pan. Fully able to catch any potential pollution or leaking, things like that. Moving forward, please use a drip pan. Now, looking at the ordinance itself, it was prepared by our own legal department in house, and now looking at the ordinance itself, mirror as close as possible by other legal jurisdictions surrounding us, source control ordinances, this is a new requirement that all the NPDES permit holders are needing to contend with here this year, in our surrounding area, so try to match our neighbors as close as possible. We presented the draft ordinance as shown at Environment Committee last month, and our next step, presented there was to present it at presentation. And then as far as the ordinance sections go, um, there's three sections. Sections one and two are more opportunistic, and then as far as the ordinance about this, there's some outdated citations in the storm water section, that we're just updating to reference the right outdated code. And then the third section is where we're adding, uh, section to the chapter 1120, titled Application of Source Control Best Management Practices to pollutant generating sources. So these are the suggested motions.
Councilmember Nutty?
I move to suspend Rule 26A in order to enact draft ordinance number 21-064 on the first reading.
I move to suspend Rule 26A in order to enact draft ordinance number 21-064 on the first reading.
Councilmember Nutty?
I have no problem making this motion, um, seeing as though we really don't have time constraints, but it makes sense that we, we have to implicate this as soon as possible anyways, and it's state mandated, the, um, fully familiar with NPDES and BMPs in my business, and there's no way around it, it's got to be.
Thank you, Mayor. So I, I feel comfortable suspending Rule 26A tonight as well. I had several technical questions about this. So I, I feel comfortable, but all of my questions really were in regard to single family residential. I had several questions, and all, all of my concerns were answered. This applies to, as the presentation was made pretty clear, this applies to businesses, not residential properties. And only certain types of businesses actually that are classified by federal law. This, this ordinance is only going to be directed at certain businesses that qualify. So it's answering the law, it's written in accordance with the directives, um, it's already funded outside of our budget, it's going to assist with other mandates under our Shellfish Protection District, and also there is a little bit of a time constraint. And so I, but with the, um, I just view the value of passage tonight outweighs the significant challenges that would be created by delay. And so I also wanted to say, I don't honestly, don't personally feel like this was a last minute thing, but instead that the staff's been constrained, you know, by staff and recovery issues. So I think they're working hard to get ahead of deadlines, and they're aware of our desire to create two readings, but this is a situation where I think it's important to pass this tonight, so I will be moving to, I will be in favor of suspending Rule 26A. Thank you.
Councilmember Steinmetz?
Um, yeah, I just, how, how long have we known about the August 1st date? When did, when did this mandate come down from the?
Councilmember Steinmetz?
Uh, and, yeah, I just, how long have we known about?
One was issued August of 2019.
When did, when did this mandate come down from the? All right. Um, I do appreciate the urgency, uh, to get this done by August 1st, so I'll be voting in favor of Rule, uh, I do appreciate the urgency. Thank you, 26A, uh, to, to move this forward, but I, I.
Seeing none. Councilmember Oxger, do you have any comments?
Uh, just that, you know, I don't, if, this would be put over to the next meeting in two weeks, I don't know that, unless somebody can enlighten me as to, you know, what, uh, timeline or something would be crunched because of just that two week delay to put it out there, just because it's a faulty two-touch rule policy, um, I would, you know, I'm not in favor of, of doing this unless someone can, can, uh, give me a, a solid example of how this is, how it, delay of two weeks adversely impact this.
Yeah, I can take that question. So part of the ordinance, there's a required 30-day administrative waiting period, and if we extend to, to a next reading, administrative waiting period would extend past August 1st.
Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Oxger?
No.
Okay, thank you. Is there any more discussion with council before we take a vote? Seeing none. All those in favor of motion one to suspend Rule 26A, raise your right hand. I see Councilmember Pennington, Councilmember Steinmetz, Deputy Mayor Buxton, Councilmember Nutty, and myself. All those opposed? I see Councilmember Harris and Councilmember Oxger, how do you vote?
No.
Okay. Motion passes 5-2. Councilmember Nutty?
I move to pass draft ordinance number 21-064, amending DMMC 11.20.020 and 11.20.070, and adding new, a new section to chapter 11.20 of the DMMC regarding code changes as required by the city's National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, NPDES.
Okay, with, uh, turning the floor. Okay, with turning the floor over to discussion and questions, councilmember Nutting, you have the floor.
I just had one question and I didn't think it was pertinent for the last motion, but for this motion. Are we going to be adding any FTEs to accommodate for the changes that will be involved with the NPDES permit and inspections?
Not at this time.
Thank you.
Councilmember Steinmetz.
Yeah, just a couple of questions. The, you indicated that a lot of businesses are already in compliance with this.
Just a couple of questions.
You have, you indicated that a lot of businesses are already in compliance. A bit, a local business to comply with this, something that we can.
Certainly. So I think it's hard to put a dollar figure to it. It'll mainly be a requirement where we would be coming on to the business and taking likely, it'll mainly be a time. However, the requirement of twenty percent of the list each year, that sets it to about one hour every requirement of years for business. So it's fairly minimal and that sets it to about one. Is that the intention here is to utilize those behavioral as much as possible, just to really limit impacts to businesses. The intention here is to utilize those behavioral just as much as possible, just to really limit impacts to businesses.
And then the, the follow-up to that is, is there a re-inspection for people that are failing the first time? Drip pans at a mechanic's place, if they show up the second time and they're not in the parking lot as they should be, is there an enforcement mechanic's place?
Right, yes. So the ordinance does outline an enforcement mechanism. Yes, so the ordinance does outline policy, we'll probably have a guidance document on that. But I can say that the enforcement mechanism used in this ordinance is exactly the same as the enforcement mechanism for our illicit discharge. Section of the same ordinance is, so it's not really any change. And I can also say that since we've run the NPDES program, I think it was two thousand nine. Adopted, I can also say that since we've, we've never run, at least in prior swim managers' time. We've never actually had to accelerate any illicit discharge to that code enforcement level. From what I've heard from our business outreach contractor, Des Moines is very environmentally conscious compared to a lot of the other cities out there. Businesses are very willing to work with us and my opinion is that I think the proximity to the sound out there really helps with that. Where very willing to work, people see the direct impact in this area, so. There isn't, so short answer, yes, there's an enforcement mechanism in the ordinance, yeah.
And it's similar to the one that we're using already in different ones?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. So since it is twenty percent a year, you know. Thank you, Mayor. I mean, I don't know how to formulate this, but that sort of seems a bit like the difference between the median. In that, you know, you've got maybe twenty large businesses with a lot of impermeable surface and potential. You know, you've got hundreds of, so I just, I was just struck by, you know, the meaningful use of the contractor's time. In going to the large business every five years and then going to the tiny. Is there any, is it just as bureaucratic as that, just going down the list or is there any acknowledgement that?
There is a little bit of leeway. They don't require a hundred percent of businesses every five years. They just require twenty percent of the list and that's something that staff can consider when we.
I'm just, do you understand what I'm saying? I'm just, it just seems a bit odd to me that, you know, large businesses might just every five years. Odd to me that casting aspersions, but it just struck me is, okay, so must the business owner comply?
Yes, the, the point of this ordinance. Requirement from ecology is the state is requiring compliance. Motivation behind that decision from the state is businesses have, they might be private drainage systems. They are using the publicly owned drainage system. And they might be private drainage, they're tapping into a public resource and this is sort of one way that they need to.
I'm just, what I'm driving at is that we've got some large apartment buildings, okay? And it's not the property manager, but you do have the dumpsters. Sometimes it can be a little difficult to get a hold of the property manager and so on.
That, that's an easy one to answer, as councilmember Buxton mentioned. Residential properties are not a part of that and that includes, that's an easy one to answer. This is strictly for commercial. At least that's the current requirement.
Okay, apartments are off the table.
Residential is not listed.
Okay, and is there any reporting from the contractor as to, that is publicly available?
We would cover a summary of the activities in our annual stormwater management plan, which is published on the website and. We would cover constantly seeking public input on that. That would be within that document.
But that's, but just to be clear, that's all, that would have the name of, an address of each business that visited. Or is it just?
We haven't seen what ecology is requiring on the annual reports.
Yeah, I'm not trying to give you a hard time, I'm just trying to get yes or no what the, you know, what.
We would need to see, ecology hasn't shown us what they.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Oxiger, do you have any questions?
I don't.
Seeing no further discussion, I'll go ahead and take the vote on motion two. All those in favor, raise your right hand. I see councilmember Pennington, councilmember Harris, councilmember Steinmetz, deputy mayor Buxton, councilmember Nutting and myself.
Aye.
Motion passes seven-zero. Thank you. Moving on to the next order of business, the passenger ferry pilot test implementation. And city manager Mathias, I turn the floor over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to recap presentation that I gave several months ago regarding the possibility of instituting passenger ferry service from Des Moines to Seattle. This was almost the first thing we saw when we did the pilot kind of maiden voyage last September. Part of work. The historical background of this, there were, there've been discussions about passenger ferry service in Des Moines since early two thousand. Never quite caught enough attention or resources or momentum to move forward. Climate's different today, there's exponential population growth throughout our region. There's no commensurate vehicle capacity, in some cases there's restrictive capacity, road changes, the bioduct removal, for example, waterfront. And there's a need for alternatives to single occupancy vehicles. So marine transit increasingly fast, comfortable, provides an attractive quality. Future electrification of ferry service will reduce carbon emission and reduce impacts to Puget Sound mammals. There's a lot of infrastructure improvements that have been made in Des Moines, the two-sixteenth, twenty-fourth, twenty-eighth avenue road improvements, enhanced access to airport. Bulkhead replacement, marina redevelopment has provided physically attractive. There's an evolving downtown and Marina steps make this attractive to visitors from around the region, creating a regional destination. Initial outreach with passenger vessel operators resulted in recommendation, the most efficient way to implement a purpose-built operational system is through a public-private partnership. So we did commissioned a demand study, which you've been made aware of, which is available. Presentation to city council, September twenty twenty. Everything was slowed down as a result of COVID, but there was strong support from local civic leadership to move forward with this, including the farmer's market, the quarter deck, Wesley, the FAA, other Des Moines business park attendants, or tenants. The ferry would be unique and serving riders in both directions. And the ferry service will provide Des Moines residents and South King County region access to Seattle waterfront and Seattle residents and visitors. On the marina, on the farmer's market and others on the marina. We did the demand study, results garnered interest from vessel operators. The Griffin family offered to host a demo ride, which we put them up on last September. It was hugely successful, popular with civic and elected leadership. We had a number of our state legislators involved and they were all hugely excited by, by the possibility of establishing some type of ongoing ferry service. We hired maritime consulting partners to review operational feasibility and elements of a potential operational plan. This was the maiden voyage from September twenty twenty-one. Nice view of, as we're leaving Des Moines Marina. So what we proposed was to do a pilot project for July through October of twenty twenty-two, or round trips per day. Wednesday through Sunday, the trip takes approximately thirty-five minutes away. Our existing infrastructure can be used for docking, loading at the Des Moines Marina. Pure space for docking is available in Seattle. We're proposing a beta test. So this is where we got to when we spoke to council last, about, oh, two and a half months ago or so. The objectives were to identify rider utilization of the service, type of travel people wanted, were they commuters or tourism, airport-related, special events? Origin and destination information, where do they come from, where were they heading, what are the operating costs actually going to be? What's an appropriate price point level for fare box recovery? And opportunities to integrate with other transportation services, in the example being light rail going to Angle Lake Station, the community shuttle in metro coming down to the marina. You could ideally, you could take a ferry to Seattle, take the light rail back to Angle Lake, take the commuter shuttle back to the marina floor. And, you know, so you've got multimodal transportation, you've done a full circuit, you've never had a trip. So future potential is passenger ferry service, as I just mentioned, provides multimodal alternatives. There's possibilities for electrification. Public financing availability at some level on some of the ferries. Electrification would enhance responsible environmental stewardship of the sound, minimize impacts to green mammals, including orcas, reduce impacts to climate change. These boats have operational limits of approximately seventeen nautical miles, which surprisingly enough is literally the distance between Des Moines and Seattle and Des Moines and Tocco. You could reach Argen and then make the trip again, but the initial focus is Des Moines to Seattle. And this would be our welcome back to the Des Moines Marina. So now let me give you, that was where we were about two and a half months ago. So let me tell you what's happened. Challenge has been to locate a ferry operator, the boat and appear in Seattle. So we've been successful in finding, working with passenger ferry operator, wants to work with us, willing to be flexible to do so. And we have, Peter Phillips is here, Peter Phillips is in our, in the audience and just want to acknowledge the great job that Peter has done working with others. To establish this opportunity for our city. Greg Dronker helping with the operational piece of this. And our excellent city staff for their persistence and success in obtaining all three of these requirements. So we'll look at adding round trips in the morning, these are some of the options. To accommodate commuter, commuter ridership primarily in September. Typically a vacation month, may be difficult to determine commuter ridership. So we're going to start out in August with the trips that are identified in terms of the timeframe. And then in September, we may introduce another trip, trip in the mornings to accommodate commuters. The city will implement a regional marketing program, leveraging existing partnerships through a number of different agencies you can see there. Really highlight what we're doing. Night council is before you, the appropriate operating agreement that's been reviewed by our legal staff. With the liability, many provisions, the allocation of liability to the operator, not to the city. And so we've moved forward with all the necessary steps to bring to you. The plan is we will evaluate the operational data from this pilot program, presenting the results to council in fall of twenty twenty-two. And we'll evaluate the possibility of instituting permanent ferry service. I'd like to emphasize to city council, our original request to not exceed nine hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for this pilot program. In fact, the cost for this two-month pilot is a fraction of that amount. And that does not include anticipated or potential revenue. And finally, connecting the dots with marina redevelopment, it was very interesting, this earlier today at our economic development committee. Hearing Ken Rogers talk about his clientele mix, how many of the people who come to the quarter deck are, have some association with Sea-Tac Airport. In-between flights or, about the quarter deck came down to the marina and we can build on that. But one of the things that's really cool is not only do we have aspects of maritime high school, but one of the things the operator has told. Ferry operator is that they're having difficulty finding staff. That's actually one reason we can't add another trip at this point, which we may be able to do in September. But what we're, what we did was got them in touch with Scott Logan at the Highline School District and there's probably a way for some of the older Highline students over sixteen. To work as employees on the boat, so we're creating some of the job opportunities, knowledge of maritime, you know. For, for students in the, in the school district, which I personally think is one of the coolest things about this that I've, you know, is the opportunity for us to help young people find their way perhaps to maritime. So we appreciate the flexibility, interest Puget Sound Express, they're working with us to accomplish this opportunity, they've been very flexible, they see mutual interest in this. Appreciate the efforts of the Harper Master. Getting impacts to marina tenants and we're able to accommodate that with minimal disruption. Main thing being that Ranger tugs will use, a portion of Ranger tugs will use a different dock. So I'm going to show you now some photos of the Chilcat Express, internal and external views. So these are the, these are the emotions, these are the motions that we're asking council to approve. And I, I want to point out one last thing to our council. And I think it's something you can all be exceedingly proud of, hopefully all of you are. I want to point out that we, as a city, are moving forward with this. We're not going through the Washington State ferry system. We're not coming up with all the reasons we can't do it. We're finding a way to move forward with the extraordinary resource of the Marina that we have. We're not coming up with all the reasons. The opportunity to share that with other people, and as a, I would have to say, the opportunity to import capital that will get spent in the city of Des Moines.
Councilor Nettie.
Oh, Councilmember Pennington, my apologies.
I move to approve the operating agreement with Puget Sound Enterprises to operate the passenger ferry pilot program in the amount not to exceed $200,000 and authorize the city manager to sign the agreement.
Seconded by Councilmember Nettie. With that, questions and discussion? I'll go to Deputy Mayor Buxton first, then I see you.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for your presentation, and I don't want to have any questions other than just comment about how excited I am. Thank you, Mayor. I have people ask me every Saturday down at the market, off and on throughout the week, are we going to do this? When are we going to do this? I'm so excited for this, I can't wait. You know, they, everybody I talk to cannot wait to ride to downtown Seattle, whether they're a young family, teenagers, in their 20s, in their 30s, in their 40s, in their 80s, everybody wants to do it. So I'm so excited to have this. In their 20s, in their 30s, in their 40s, really a great addition. Everybody, thank you for putting this together and all the hard work to make this beta test. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Buxton. Moving on to Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. So first, Laia, I just, hopefully a lightning round. Why was the second consultant nest?
Thank you, Mayor. So first, Laia, I just, hopefully a lightning round. Why was the special nest job that the other company has done?
Well, I think it's not a simple undertaking, and I think that there's a lot of complexity to this. Mr. Phillips is very familiar with the industry players in that industry, that Greg, the other consultant, is very familiar with. Much more focused on the operating agreement, elements of the operating agreement, cost structure, all of that. The two of them worked closely with us to come up with this proposal for the council. So I would just say it was more than one person could do, and Mr. Phillips not only is involved in maritime industry, but has other pursuits, and so he has a limit on his time, and we brought in the experts.
Is there a fair that I missed? Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, I mean, there's, is there, yeah.
We haven't, we didn't do the fair because we don't like to preempt council approval to move forward with things. But the plan we've talked about was provide initial period free. Then from that point, identify fair structure that literally will be less than what it costs to park in Seattle.
Okay, so, I mean, so the, I mean, there may be a fair at some point in this beta period, or it may, you know, so, I mean, so, I mean, we'll get.
That's not what I said. What I said was that initially there may be a period of time when there's free service, and then we will institute a fair. But that would potentially be less than what it costs. Plan is not provide free service, and then we will institute a fair.
Okay, I'm not, and, thank you for that. Let's see here, does it, does it cut into our guest mortgage in any way? Or is there any impact on basically any, you know, of our?
Yeah, I don't believe, I don't believe so because we're not using it for extended periods of time. Ferry comes, loads, goes to Seattle, unloads, turns around, comes back. The space where the ferry will dock is currently used to showcase the Ranger tugs, will move them to another location, and there's only a few of the boats currently used. So we don't anticipate any discussion of operating, dynamic, Harbor Master.
And Mayor, you can, I just, I've got like three or four more, but if you want to.
Let's go ahead and allow you to ask those.
Yeah. So are there any, so that, is, so this is $290,000, so that some expenditure for this two-month beta period? Anything else like fuel or what?
I believe that there's a budget in your packet.
Yeah, yeah, I know, I'm just trying to get if there's anything like, like, yeah, are there going to be other, any other costs beyond, what, trying to get if there's anything like, like, that you can, you know, for example, are we going to do anything like I asked regarding Uber or drink in this beta period? I mean, are we going to spend any money, going to do anything like I asked? Facilities, just regarding Uber or are we going to tell? Trying to get people into multimodal.
Yeah, I think, Councilmember, I would be remiss if I anticipated the results of a beta test before it began.
Yeah.
I think, Councilmember, I would be remiss if I anticipated.
Great, that's it.
Councilman Stenmitz.
Yeah, I, I see the hours, the first ship leaves Des Moines in the morning, if I'm correct, and the last, see, as proposed schedule in the morning, within that. So that effectively eliminates any commuter traffic, at least for normal hours. How are we going to get a good read on that, at least for normal hours?
Yeah, fair question. So I think what I was trying to express was that, at the moment, in August, we would go with that schedule. Partly that as to staffing of the boat, so maybe that getting some high school students to help will accommodate that. Then what we'd like to look at is the possibility in September of putting together something early in the morning to provide commuter to Seattle, and then see what we need to do. We have to adjust something on the other end, the backend, so. But the August didn't seem to make sense aside from the fact that we may not be able to accommodate an additional trip based on staff. But the August is kind of one of those months where a lot of people are away, and it may not, how true of a read could we get? Typically after Labor Day, things kind of kick back normal, we get a demand for that.
Councilmember Pennington.
So, and I know I've said this before, but I want to emphasize it, and especially to the city manager's point, when we talked to Ken Rogers. I want to emphasize it, and especially to the city manager's point. I didn't know that there was so many folks that on their layovers came down through, from the Port of Seattle. So, you know, it goes back to what I had authorized the city manager to look after this and to come up with, bring this contract. All these dots that we've put into place, the, 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 the shuttle that goes from the station, the Sound Transit Station at 200, 27th Avenue, it brings it down to the Marina, the station, all these different pieces, and the Quarter Deck is a part of one of those dots, in that they went in to start this business, it was, it was, they were just. And the Quarter Deck is a work of one of those first model businesses, and our different pods around the Marina for future businesses to be built as we, you know, develop the Marina and do the work that we're doing now. So it's, it's one more of, it's connected, and, you know, kind of, what's the, so it's the period on the multimodal transportation. And what's great about this is we're in control of it, you know, we're not working with the state, we're not reliant on, and what's great about this is, oops, you have to, the state or the Port of Seattle or anybody like that, we're in control of this, and it's really, I think, a testament to, to, to the vision in the city and where we're going. So it's, we're actually seeing these pieces come together in really cool form. So anyway, that's one of the primary reasons that I'm, so it's, we're actually seeing.
Let me go to Councilmember Oxigur first. Councilmember Oxigur, do you have any questions or comments?
Yes, I, once again, I'm concerned about the fact that we've laid out an incredible scope of information that we're trying to gather to determine whether or not this test is going to, you know, is a positive result, and we're contracting the amount of time now that, first we were at four months, now we're down to two, and we're going to offer limited service that's only going to address the issue of, what I would, term is recreational use rather than commuter use. We're going to have a period where the, quite possibly it's going to be free, which of course is going to build numbers like crazy, because once people have to pay for it, they may take a different look at it. I'm just concerned that we're, we're, we're setting ourselves up to expect too much evaluation on too short of a, too short of a timeline.
Are those your comments?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Harris.
Thank you. So is it, it, so, are you, you're not just implying it, it sounds like you're saying that you intend to conduct a second testing regimen starting, is that the intent?
I don't think that is the intent. I think what we said was that it came up about the availability of the service for commuters. And so, so the idea would be that it's possible we could add service earlier in the day, Councilman Stenmitz made the reference, earlier in the day, and see what kind of response we get in September if we do that.
Does it, but not to put too fine a point on it, but that would not, you're, would not, is it your intent to come back to council for authorization to do that? Or is it your understanding that that $975,000 is basically, you could keep, you know, is it your understanding remainder of that in September, you know, is basically, is it the understanding that you would not have to come back to council in order to proceed?
Yeah, well, the, first of all, the $975,000 was a ballpark figure. The limit on the two months was a function of being able to find dock space in Seattle. That was not us, that was searching for dock space, and believe me, Peter did a yeoman's job of contacting people. We met with many people and eventually were able to locate dock space. The original statement by the council or approval was for 970, not to exceed $975,000. We're bringing you tonight a total of $290,000. If we need to exceed that, we will have to come back to council. There's $700,000 in there that's not being utilized because we're able to do it for much less.
Okay, so you're saying that you will come back to council after the 60 days for this evaluation, or if you need more money, $290,000, what's in the packet?
That's correct. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. Would this boat have Wi-Fi and beverage service?
For the record, Peter Phillips speaking. The boat is currently in use as a whale-watching boat, so it will have, I don't know if it'll have Wi-Fi, that is a question that hasn't come up, but I suspect that because we're not traveling very far offshore, that that will not be a problem, and it will have bar service. There's one of the images there shows you the bar.
Thank you. Also, obviously, when we kick this off, can you, either one of you that would answer it, what's your, what's in your mindset about the marketing and possibly involving the press and everybody else to get the word out that we've got this great service to bring here?
Well, I've got 35 years in communications, so I've got a network of people that I know in communications and marketing here. There's a lot of what we can call, we listed off a bunch of the organizations that we're going to be partnering with, whose members are going to be, are in the hospitality tourism industry, who will partner with. The fact that this is a unique public-private membership, to my knowledge, this kind of thing hasn't been done in Puget Sound ever, is editorial value right there, we're going to get a lot of press. The fact that we're going to be using local high school students to crew the boats is going to make it very interesting to that sector of the market. The fact that, that these, at 16 years old, a kid can get on a boat like this and get sea time, credit for a future career with no experience at all, makes it a really attractive workforce development. And that is kind of something that we're, I think we're going to see a lot of press around that, that's a real hot topic right now. It's a local high school, it's a Highline School District. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does, thank you, appreciate that. It sounds like you got a plan, that's what I was asking. I will say this, I do support Councilman Stenmitz's idea, I'd love to see an earlier one, and I would support that as well if we, if it's relevant. Obviously, we've evaluated for a month and we come and figure it out, but as a commuter or potential commuter, love that earlier option. But I agree, I think Councilmember Pennington brought it the best. Here we've been doing this hard work to open up our doors to the community, and this is a good way to find out many things as far as what we can do, and it's very likely to give us a great glimpse into the future, so I'm going to support this. Is there anybody else with discussion or questions? Councilmember Pennington.
One last question. If we, if we're able to, in September, and we're able to add that extra run, is that going to take us outside of this $290,000? If we, if we're able to, in September, and we're able to add that extra run, is that going to?
That I don't know the answer to right now, but we know that if you proportional, starting at 975, that we're doing this for two months, bringing it down to 290, maybe that there's a margin associated with another, you know, sequence of the route or not.
And the reason I ask is if we had a sense that there would, that it would exceed this, I would want to come back and, and have council go through, that it would exceed this, and if there's, if we need to amend it now, is that something that would be appropriate? And if, to build in that, if there's contingency in case that extra run gets put in there?
I would like to make a motion.
Counsel, wait, just a second, Councilmember Stenmitz, let's, the question was to them, let's ask him, and then we'll go from there.
Yeah, I should have known.
I can answer that question.
Okay.
So the $200,000 is about a $26,000, based on the cost of the agreement. So we have that right now. We did reach out to the operator today about adding those extra times, and that's when we were told that there were staffing issues to begin with. We did reach out to the operator today. We currently have $26,000, you know, so if the council wanted to increase that, they could. It wouldn't, it wouldn't mean that we'd have to spend it, it would just be an authority there.
That answers my question and addresses my concern. It wouldn't mean that we'd have to spend it, it would just be, I must have missed that when I went through it, but I saw a lot of the other answers, some of the other questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Harris, do you have a motion?
Yes, I would like to amend the contract specifically to limit to 60 days and the current routes, and then come back to council for an evaluation of performance for modifying And then come back to council for an evaluation of performance, for modifying basically any aspect of the beta test.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Any discussion? Seeing none? Oh.
Councilmember Oxiger? Again, uh, you know, the, the question, there's a question on the commute as to whether or not we're gonna get sufficient information on, September is usually a good weather month. And I brought this up at the last discussion, is that, you know, what effect is, would inclement weather have on, you know, the commuting aspect of this? And I don't think we're gonna get that answer. So I would, I'd say, if we're gonna expand to do, to commute, we better, we better have a, you know, well-rounded look at.
See, I'll go ahead and then I'll call Deputy Mayor Buxton. It seems to me that we've got a two-month program, we're talking about the potential of a contingency greater than the twenty-six thousand dollars, as far as if something was to extend into the winter because we saw success, then that would come before council. So I'm not sure the motion really has bearing, but that's my opinion, Deputy Mayor Buxton, and then I'll call you, Councilmember Harris.
I was surprised at the motion, so I thought he was going to make a totally different motion that I think I would like to make, so I think we need to finish with this one first. Unless, let's finish with this one first.
Go to Councilmember Harris.
Uh, I, I, you know, I believe in, you know, not changing the variables during the test. I, I, you know, this is the test that the city manager wanted, run the test, and then have an evaluation, and then change a variable, if it is the will of the council, then run another test. But in the middle of the test, to modify the game, is essentially invalidating the test. In the middle of my opinion. And I made that motion because I just, I do not want this, I don't want the yard, what's that thing, the goalpost, is that, yeah, I don't want the goalposts being moved during the test. I don't want the yard.
Deputy Mayor Buxton?
Uh, I, I would not be as opposed to moving the goalposts, so to speak, in the middle of the test, simply because the goalpost gets moved anyway because of our seasonal behavior as a society. So, uh, so I'm, I am not, I would, I wouldn't necessarily call that us moving the goalposts, it just gets, our society changes in the middle of the beta test, and I think it would be wise to incorporate some flexibility to accommodate that. Our society changes in the middle of the beta test. Thank you.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yeah.
And Councilmember Steinmetz?
Was it, my, I wasn't implying, Councilmember Harris, to move the goalpost. I was simply saying, is there enough money, because it was already established, they, September, it was feasible, and they had the, the staffing, that they would, they would add runs that would accommodate Councilmember Steinmetz's concern of the commuter piece. And so I did, my question and intent was just to simply do ensure that if there was an additional cost to that, and if we have the contingency to absorb that, that's all that was, it was just a question. Anyway, good conversation.
Councilmember Steinmetz?
As, as I understand it, and I wanna make sure I am fully understanding it, so let me, wait one second, just to make sure I've got the, is, what we're, what the original motion is authorizing is essentially two hundred and ninety thousand dollars for two months of operation. We're not authorizing a specific schedule in the legislation itself, but rather, talked about in certain hours, and we have at least twenty-six thousand dollars of play, if you will, in that budget, to expand another run, if that looks like that's the order in September. Am I, is that an accurate summary of this?
Yeah, yeah. So, well, it's motion one, is what's on the table. So this is just for the operator, this is the boat and the captain, and, and the day-to-day operations of the boat. It's two hundred thousand, we're currently agreement, this is gonna charge us eighty-seven thousand dollars per month, so that puts, for the schedule that's in the contract, that gives us an extra twenty-six thousand, we were to add an extra, an early morning commute, which we can't do in August because the operator is unsure of staffing, but we would like to do in September to address the council's concerns.
Okay. So then, what I'm, what I'm hearing is essentially, out of that two hundred thousand, there's twenty-six thousand, that's flexibility to add that new run, but it's not a given that that's even gonna happen, it depends upon staffing, on the desire, that's flexibility. Would it necessarily change the other runs?
No. So if you see in the schedule, it's, it's basically an hour one way, an hour back, so if we were to add a commuter run, which we had talked about, would be basically eight, come back at nine, basically an hour one way, an hour back, the other one, the next one, would be leaving at ten, which is where we'd start in August.
So we wouldn't be changing the variables, we would just be adding an additional variable in September?
Yes, yes, just adding one, one round trip, first thing in the morning.
That, that answers my question.
With, with, seeing no further discussion, let's go ahead and take a vote on Councilmember Harris's motion, and as I understand it, it was basically, it's the, it's the two hundred thousand and the ninety thousand, and any other extension or authorization requires city council approval. Is that correct?
Yeah, I just want to ensure that after sixty days, that the city comes back for a vote and approval to.
Okay. With that, I'll take a vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. I see Councilmember Harris. Councilmember Oxiger, how do you vote?
Aye.
Aye, so I see that. All those opposed? I see Councilmember Pennington, Councilmember Steinmetz, Councilmember Buxton, Councilmember Nutting, and myself. The vote, the motion fails two five. I'd like to make a motion. On the first motion, well, I'd like to amend that motion. I think we should make it for two hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars, which would be a contingency of sixty thousand, sixty thousand dollars, correct? An additional fee, because if it is pliable, that we can add the morning service, then we have the money, we can go forward with it. Rather than bringing it back to council, I think we've explored it enough, and I think it's a great opportunity just to do that now. So with that, I, I have that motion on the floor. Council, Deputy Mayor Buxton?
Second.
Discussion. Councilmember Nutting?
I am in favor of the motion that's in front of us. While I do believe that staff has our best interest in mind, and I am all for the ferry service, I think we have contingency in there, and I, I think that, I'm not a favor, in favor of either of the proposed amendments to the motion. We move forward the way it is, we see where we're at, I'm not in favor of, city manager needs more money, it's not tanking, or it is tanking, then we hear about it.
Thank you, Councilmember Nutting. Councilmember Pennington, and then I'll go to you, Councilmember Steinmetz.
I agree with Councilmember Nutting. I mean, we, the, the question was, is, is there enough built in to this? I agree with Councilmember Nutting. We, the, the question was, is, is there be in favor of keeping the motion as it, as it was, motion one, as it was read with the, and I guess I feel comfortable with staff just that they built in.
Thank you, Councilmember Pennington. Councilmember Steinmetz?
Yeah, I think, I, I agree with Councilmember Nutting and Pennington, that, I think we got an answer that we have the contingency in, I, I, if, if the decision is made that to expand the service. And so I'm not sure this, I'm not sure your amendment is necessary, and I do think it's important to sort of keep a lid on it, and, I'm not sure, I'm not sure, they come back to council to seek additional funding.
Thank you, Councilmember Steinmetz. I would like to say that I'm most likely now, after hearing your arguments and so forth, and you feel confident that I'll withdraw the motion, what I was after was just making sure that we could go forward with it in the quickest, fastest, most efficient way. But hearing, hearing that, that calms my concerns that we might not have enough resources, so I'll withdraw the motion. With that being said, we will vote on motion one. Is that agreed? Okay, all those in favor of motion one, please raise, raise your right hand. I see Councilmember Pennington, I see Councilmember Steinmetz, Deputy Mayor Buxton, I see Councilmember Nutting, myself. How do you vote, Councilmember Oxiger?
Aye.
And all those opposed, otherwise? Councilmember Harris, the motion passes five two. All right.
Aye.
I move to, to approve the consulting agreement with Maritime Consulting Partners in an amount not to exceed ninety thousand dollars and authorize the city manager to sign the agreement substantially.
Seconded by Councilmember Nutting. All right, any discussion before we go to the second vote? Councilmember Harris?
So, I, I was counseled this week to be calm, cool, and collected. You know, tell me how I'm doing, but this whole thing is insane. Thank you.
Councilmember Oxiger, do you have any comments?
Not at this time.
Okay. With that, I think we've completed our discussion on motion two. All those in favor, raise your right hand. I see Councilmember Pennington, Councilmember Steinmetz, Deputy Mayor Buxton, Councilmember Nutting, and myself. All those opposed? Councilmember Harris and Councilmember Oxiger, how do you vote?
Aye.
The motion passes five two. All right, moving on, we move on to items of, for future consideration. This time is for the sole purpose of proposing new business items that have not previously been before the council for discussion on future agenda. This is not a time for questions about old business, council members can submit questions or seek updates previously discussed, business to the city manager at any time. Do you have, do you have any council members that have new business that they would like to propose? Deputy Mayor Buxton?
Thank you, Mayor. And, considering our council rules and, of procedure, so I'd like to propose that we have a discussion about how to approach the update of our council, and I'd like to add this as an agenda item in a.
I would agree with that. I think a, a review of the council rules is gonna be important, and I think getting the rules in order into it in a, in a new, in another council meeting for discussion is a good idea. Sounds like we got four of us.
I, I, just, just bear with me for fifteen seconds, I thought we agreed that that would happen at the seven April meeting, and I was just waiting to see it show up.
The, yeah, the discussion here is that, that we would kind of talk about what, what the best way to go about that at, at a future council meeting and so forth, and then probably set up a following meeting where we would.
Yeah, yeah, no, I just.
So that's, that's all, I have enough support to move it to an agenda item in the future, and I'll work with city staff on when that can be. All right, is there any other new items? Councilmember Harris?
Yeah, and this is totally, I want to say how much I really enjoy looking at the new flags at the city flagpole, and this may, we, I was wondering if the city might research moving the flagpole over to the little pad that's like about fifty feet south, because it's like surprisingly difficult to see the flags, they're surrounded by these big trees. You should just take a look.
What you're proposing is, you, and looking for council support, is that, that it be looked into to move the flagpole?
Yeah, what would be the cost of moving that pad?
All right. Do we have others that support? Councilmember Oxiger?
Uh, sure.
Council, Councilmembers, I'm sorry, Councilmember Steinmetz? Okay, so we have three people to consider that.
So we put that on a future meeting.
Correct, but we need staff, obviously, to estimate what the cost would be, I assume, right?
Yeah, that's all I, that's my intent, is just to find out what the hours are, the, you know.
Correct, we need staff, obviously, to estimate what the cost would be, I assume, right?
Yeah, that's all I, that's my intent.
Please, City Clerk Wilkins?
Thank you, Mayor. When our facilities maintenance, Mike Dreho's was putting the flags up for us, he did indicate that they'll be trimming those trees by, when time permits, it's on our list, I don't know if that will help, it'll.
So it, so it may make it a mute point?
I don't know, I'm just saying that that's in the.
I, I would propose this, I would say, let's let the trees get trimmed, and then see, see the situation. Would that be acceptable?
Yeah.
Okay, that sounds like we have that business. With that, I'm gonna move on to board and committee reports, and I start with you, Councilmember Harris.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. So, let's see here, I did attend a Reach Out Des Moines meeting, and Councilmember Nutting's wife spoke about National Night Out, and, and that sounds like it's gonna be really good, I would like to see, I'd like to see there be some more involvement from people who live in Pacific Ridge, and if there are residents in that neighborhood, please contact the city, because, you know, there are several National Night Out events in, in, and it just struck me that, that, yeah, it should be run by people who live in, in their own neighborhood. I attended the Mount Rainier graduation at Showware, as I know that other members of the council did, and spoke with Ozzy Bahagor, the newest director, and I was given, not one, not two, but three air quality monitors by, did sound clean air, one of them is a purple, and, you know, you can tell fake news, okay. But, the, the idea is they give out air quality monitors to any resident that wants them, and some of them are either indoor and some are outdoor, and they are expressing a good deal of curiosity now about Des Moines, which is a really good thing. The thing, I would encourage people to contact, and, you know, get one of these things. The thing is, on a nice day like today, the monitors are all gonna say that the air is good, when the sun is out and anything like that, but residents will often say at night, when it's, you know, dank, cloudy and so on, that's when they smell things, and so on, because the air is more stagnant. And so if you have these little monitors, you can kind of get an idea and sort of validate what residents in all sorts of neighborhoods have been talking about for years. So, you did sound pscleanair.org, and they will be happy to give you one of these gizmos, either fix one or something you can walk around with and take your own readings, and that's all I got, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. Attended the environmental committee meeting tonight, and, that we discussed, but the Xenis, PIS plan will be moved to the July meeting, and I apologize in, in advance to Director Lathrop, I'm not gonna be able to put, do a report that, that is as comprehensive as yours on the, on the housing action plan, but, but we have entered into a contract with HBL, and they'll be putting together, that what they'll do is they'll, they'll. They'll be putting together, what they'll do is they'll take a look at our, our policies, they'll take a look at admitting things, they'll look at our housing inventory. We currently get our inventory from King County. We'll have our own in-house inventory. They'll look at barriers to housing. And so there'll be quite a bit of public engagement with, and with key stakeholders. So they'll have some of those meetings, and, and so that will, and, and I'm sure that if, if there's probably better information that I'm providing, but, you know, on the website. But go ahead and look at that, but it's, we're moving forward and looking at truly what our, what our housing plan is and how it works. And certainly some of that is done in conjunction with other cities as well, so it's more of a regional thing. And this is due to the Department of Commerce by June of twenty-three. We, the other topic was the quarter deck at the Marina. The owner is looking for a lease, extension or a new lease and extension. We're looking at negotiating some lease rates and then the ability to be able to assign the ownership if, if in the future they decide to sell. So the committee made the recommendation that the city attorney and city manager work with themselves or their designees work with the owner to, to put together a new contract that, that will be beneficial to all. Oh, one other thing. I also attended the retirement of Sergeant Nowoski and Detective Gallagher. They, between the two of them, they put a lot of years into this, so I really like to thank them for their service to the city and the community. And, you know, they've, they've done, I've worked with them at a lot of different levels. They're, they're quality folks, and they serve the city well, so. Thank you to both Detective Gallagher and Sergeant Nowoski for your service.
Moving on to Councilmember Steinmetz.
Thank you. I attended the public safety and emergency management meeting earlier this month. We got a lot of good information. Animal Control Service in place, reasonably well-publicized and. I also today attended the municipal facilities meeting, and I assume that the chair, Councilmember Nutting, will update us on that. I attended the Black Anniversary last night down at the Quarter Deck, which was an absolute blast of the time. Additionally, there was an event called Burning Saucer Saturday night, which is down at Redondo Country Club. We have in our community a micro historian. And what he's done, this is Steve, and he's in our community with, or in conjunction with some other people. You know, has found small incidences and really sort of looked into them and build them up. And it's, it's a great way to learn the history of certain things here in the fugitive zone. And it's a lot of them up, and it's a process of it. So those were, those were great. There was also a very good event at Father's Day down at the Quarter Deck. Curtis Moore, who's a local songwriter, played for three hours from six, from three to six in the sun and didn't stop at all. At a rousing time. I've been to the farmer's market all the weeks that it's been open. The attendance has been great. Really enjoy that. I think that we're also starting to see some stone fruit come in, and that's one of the weeks that it's been open, about the more. I like that, I think that. I want to remind that if we're looking for teens, teens to work, particularly even in the. We have another high school district, or another school district around here, Federal Way. And Federal Way is a big high school, and I'm sure that there are some people there who would love to get the job. So it doesn't have that direct connection, but probably would love to have that connect, build that. So please, when you're doing sort of the outreach, don't forget Federal Way High School. And then lastly, I'd just like to note the agenda tonight was nicely balanced between public presentations. Thank you.
Councilmember Oxger, you're going to be next.
Okay, I, I was having a little bit of trouble with my audio at the very first of the meeting and stuff. And I'm not sure, Mr. Mayor, you explain why I'm not there? Okay, for, just to enlighten people, I tested positive for COVID. And after five days of isolating, I then suddenly decided to develop some symptoms. So that's why I'm not there, and I appreciate the opportunity to be able to, you know, participate tonight by telephone. Other than that, I really don't have much more of a report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We all, as a council, wish you well in your healing of COVID. Moving on to Councilmember Nutting.
Thank you, Mayor. Facilities Committee as well as the meeting tonight. Thank you, co-chair Pennington, for taking me, because I was a bit tardy. But in municipal facilities, we discussed potential. Cell tower going on the already existing telecommunications hole at the field house. And then we were updated on the CIP projects and grants. It looks like we're going to be applying for a Redondo restroom RCO grant. Between one, one point five and two million dollars to go in accordance with the peer replacement. And then a King County park levy in November, December, we have to go in, and this grant is a fifty percent match grant. Be looking at applying for field house play equipment, Cecil Powell Park play equipment, and should know back by early twenty-twenty-three. Second, third, yes, on August second, National Night Out will be held at Midway Park. Free those who know. We missed a year for COVID, and then we were able to pull it off with the great partnership through many partnerships we have. CHI Franciscan, Reach Out Des Moines, the Des Moines Park and Rec. And my wife and I were up there handing out pizzas last year. This year, again, I will be up there with my family barbecuing, and it's put on for this community because they are an underserved community and to show our appreciation for them too. So. A little bit different than what Councilmember Harris alluded to, but anyways, moving forward. That was August second. We'll be up there. August sixteenth, from three to six. Those who know my family, my girls have done a lemonade fundraiser several years running now, and they've raised over ten thousand dollars for various entities, Shop With The Cop, Moines Area Food Bank, SR Three. This year, they have decided that they're going to give all the proceeds again to Moines Police Foundation for Shop With The Cop. And then, last but not least, Ram Fest twenty-twenty-two is August twenty-eighth, from two to four, on the Marina floor. And it's Mount Rainier High School teams and clubs. We'll have booths down there fundraising and information about their upcoming events. Yeah, just, just to build team building type stuff with the community, let, let the community know what's going on. And then I did want to thank Susan, it looks like she got out of here for her years of service. Much appreciated. I don't, I don't know what else to say about that, and congratulations Denise and Dan and Bonnie and Tara. Well deserved. I don't think in previous administration, any of this would be possible. And so I appreciated everything that staff and Mike have been able to do for us. And then for the ferry service, I'm so excited for this. There's a lot of people there, so much backing for that. It's just great. Looking forward to it. What a great summer ahead of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Nutting. Deputy Mayor Buxton, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to take on to what my colleague here said about that. What did you say? It was August twenty-second, or was it a Sunday of the Ram Fest? That is such a fabulous community gathering point, whether you have kids in Mount Rainier High School or not. It's such a great way to, they do performances, they do, they give little presentations in, being in the summer and out down there on the marina. A really great gathering.
August twenty-eighth.
August twenty-eighth, okay, anyway, great, great opportunity. I attended the Self-Keep Housing and Homelessness Partners Executive Board meeting. Skip, we, we've been building and building for a while. They're, they're embarking on their first round of funding to potential partners in the region who are, who will be working to invest in and build affordable housing. So this will be a grant distribution process, and so they're finalizing their funding guidelines, or we are finalizing the funding guidelines. In addition, we received a great presentation from an organization called Housing Connector. And they operate as a bridge that connects property owners with people in need of housing, and they, they help people to overcome the challenges, their challenges to stability. And so they, they work as a middle, middle person in between, so I was impressed with their work. And they've established credibility and have success data. I've attended, whenever I can, on Mondays, I go up to the senior center and have lunch with seniors. And that is, I just tell you, that is such a fabulous program. It's Monday through Thursday. I go up to Monday through Thursday at noon, if you're income challenged, it's a free lunch. Technically, it's free. You're free, free to give a donation on the table if you want, but it's a free lunch for senior challenged senior center. I love the opportunity to sit around your table and laugh and chit chat. So I hope, you know, come and join the seniors. And I attended the Highline High School Open House. There are not very many families or students, residents that, you know, take advantage, are able to take it down to that new facility. It's a fabulous facility, but we have a great working relationship with, appreciate our relationship with the school district. This is one of their new facilities, a fabulous facility. And, and they also, though, are a fabulous host. This campus hosts many regional sporting events, which includes almost all the students of the other high schools. It was a great opportunity to see a new facility in our area. And with that, a segue to the, I also attended the Mount Rainier graduation. Great opportunity festive. Go Eagles, go Pirates. Congratulations.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Buxton. I'll make this quick. I did all the, a bunch of the stuff they did. I will say this, that I did get to meet the new sheriff, Patty Cole Tyndall. Chief Thomas and I ended up at Pete Von Reichbauer's Good Eggs Breakfast, and we got to hear philosophy. It was interesting. I went to, attended skateboard, a couple of things. We talked about youth fairs, and they're working on ways, especially for kids that have get, get like assistance for food at school and so forth, that might be economically disadvantaged fare, free, or free fares with a card and so forth. And it, it opens up their mobility to get to school and to jobs and things like that. And the last thing I want to say, and this will be probably the most popular thing that you'll hear at the meeting, is we have ordinances against fireworks. Coming up on Fourth of July, and we're going to have fireworks. So please, please do not get your own fireworks and light them off. They're illegal in this town. It's a, it's a very big drain on the resources of the police that are going to be very busy with a lot of things to do. And I think the chief would appreciate that, is asking you not to light fireworks, but enjoy the ones that are going to be provided by Destination Des Moines and the city. Thank you. With that, do I have a motion to adjourn? See Councilmember Nutting. I have a second for Councilmember Steinmetz, I'll call it. All those in favor, now remember, when I say this, we're all in favor, and then I have to go to Councilmember Oxger.
I was going to make a statement. Oh, you know, he.
Yeah, don't do them, is what he said. All those in favor, say aye.